Good evening. Welcome to everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the city of San Clemente for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council chambers. Could I ask everybody to join me for the Pledge of Legions? Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the American states of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Regarding the roll call, we have two commissioners missing. Commissioner Davis and Chair Protem McCacken are missing. All other commissioners are present. We have no special order of business. That's item four. Our minutes, item five, are going to be presented at our next meeting, so we don't have any tonight to discuss, which takes us to item six, which is oral communications. If any member of the audience would like to have three minutes to talk about anything not on the agenda, now would be the time. Any non-agenda item speakers? Okay, seeing none? We have no items on our consent calendar, and that takes us to item eight, which is our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is for a project 24-231, the Habad Jewish Center at 1306 North El Camino Real. This is where we, the Planning Commission, will consider a request for an amended development permit, DP 20-399, and a conditional use permit, 22-430, for a 1,479 square foot addition, remodel, and off-site parking and institutional facility. For the record, Chair Protem McCacken has just joined us. Welcome. Okay. Before we proceed, I just, because this is a public hearing, I just want to ask my colleagues if any of them have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. And John Camp is here representing the staff with a staff report. John, could you provide your staff report?
Yes, just give me one. Here we are.
When you're ready, sir.
We've got it.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Chair Cosgrove and Planning Commissioners. John Camp, I'll be presenting to you the Jewish, or the Habad Jewish Center project. Just to give you a little context here, the project is located at 1306 North El Camino Real. It's located within the neighborhood commercial zoning district, or NC2, as well as several overlays, including the architectural overlay, the affordable housing overlay, and the coastal zone, or coastal overlay. The site is about 13,486 square feet and is improved with about a 3,500 square foot two-story Spanish building. There are six garage spaces onsite, as well as seven parking spaces that are surface. Just to give you a little background on this property, it was originally developed back in 1997 with entitlements to approve the structure. The original use was associated with an educational program with the county. And then back in 2013, it transitioned over officially with entitlements for a conditional use permit to the Habad Jewish Center, which included religious services as well as a religious school and did have shared parking. The current activities at the site include evening Torah studies, which have continued since its origination, as well as Saturday service and Hebrew school on Sunday. So currently, there are 45 seats within the sanctuary, and the six garage spaces that are onsite have been used for storage this entire time. So the request before the Planning Commission this evening is for a remodel to the first and second floor, as well as a 1,479 square foot addition to the second floor to bring the total structure up to 6,650 square feet. The second floor expansion would be inclusive of the enlarging the sanctuary. However, there also would be other improvements, including new restrooms, a future kitchen, storage above in the attic space, as well as an elevator. The project also includes exterior improvements that would enhance the building's Spanish architecture, which is a requirement in this area for the architectural overlay, as well as a request for 10 off-site parking spaces at Benita Park, which would be subject to City Council approval, and we'll discuss later in the presentation. So the project was reviewed in conformance with all of the applicable development standards associated with the neighborhood to commercial, neighborhood commercial development, and inclusive of setbacks, heights, lot coverage, and landscaping. As previously identified, the parking is requested off-site for the expanded sanctuary, which I'll discuss later. So here is just a general site plan illustrating the configuration of the property located along North El Camino Real frontage, as well as it backs up to the alley or Ka'eh Mirador, which is where the parking is accessed to the site. So the general footprint of the building will remain in place. However, the addition would expand primarily to the second floor of the structure. So here we have the proposed first floor plan, which would be inclusive of a lobby and entry area where you can see the elevator on the left-hand side of the screen. Then there would be three offices, as well as a multipurpose room that would be utilized for some of the Torah schooling and Hebrew school. On the second floor is predominantly the sanctuary. However, there is additional bathrooms provided, as well as a space for a future kitchen. So to discuss the architecture proposed here, again, this project is located within the architectural overlay, so it's required to be Spanish design. However, in this particular location of North El Camino Real, it's not required to be Spanish colonial revival architecture, but just this general Spanish architecture, which has been incorporated in the project here to enhance the existing design. As you can see, we have several elevations here of the renderings to illustrate that, but provides a more balanced front elevation with the full width of the second floor for the structure, as well as traditional Spanish architectural elements are incorporated, including the wood eaves, tower elements, arches, inset windows to convey that Spanish design. Here we have the front elevation with the comparison of the existing, as well as the proposed elevation, illustrating the Spanish architectural, as well as the new tower element and the enhancement of the overall facade. Here we have the rear elevation. We don't have a rendering for this, but as you can see, the three garage doors would be enclosed as part of the expansion of the sanctuary, as well as the kitchen or future kitchen, and with incorporation of arch openings with French doors. So as part of this project, staff evaluated the operations of the facility, as well as the parking, due to the proposed increase in the overall parking demand here, which there's a shared use component here. So during the weekdays, during normal business hours, eight to five, it's just general office use, which results in just under five parking spaces. However, religious studies occur in the evenings, resulting in four spaces, and the Shabbat services is where the predominant parking demand is, which is on that Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30, requiring the 17 parking spaces, which seven would be for onsite and 10 would be for offsite. And then the Hebrew school, which is on Sunday, requiring five parking spaces. So the offsite parking location was evaluated, and per the city's zoning code, it allows for offsite parking locations to be up to 1,000 feet from the subject property. In this case, it's 145 feet. However, I've also illustrated the travel distance to the nearest protected crosswalk, resulting in an overall trip distance one way of 1,388 feet in linear length. frontage along North El Comino Real, which does allow for street parking. So there's additional public parking capacity there as well. Also, as part of the analysis, staff conducted a parking survey to evaluate the parking demands at the Habad site, as well as the Boys and Girls Club and the Benita Park parking lot, to evaluate if there's adequate capacity for the shared parking, and concluded that there was, given that onsite at the Habad site, there was a Saturday that had utilization of seven spaces. And then at the Benita Park, a maximum of 10 parking spaces was utilized on Saturday when there's 34 parking spaces onsite. So less than one-third was utilized at that time, at that peak. However, you can see that those are two kind of offshoot periods. And then in addition to that, the religious services, they recommend that their members do walk to their services. So there's a predominant percentage of their congregation that does walk regularly, as you can see from the numbers here. So the project did go forward to Design Review Subcommittee back in December of 2022, where they evaluated the project and made recommended modifications to the architecture of the design and enhance the Spanish design, which the applicant has predominantly incorporated into the project, related to extending the eaves of the tower elements, as well as making some adjustments to the tower at the entry. The applicant desired to not incorporate scalloped stucco elements along the side elevations due to the costs associated with that and it not being in the architectural overlay for Spanish colonial revival architecture. Staff has also incorporated in conditions of approval to ensure that during the building plan review phase, that all of those key critical Spanish elements are incorporated in the project plans, like the bird stops, mortar packing, gutters, et cetera, as well as the applicant has provided a conceptual landscape plan as part of the plan package, which will be plan-checked in detail during the building permit phase. So with that, the operations and conditions of the project, as stated, condition 4.3, that the city, that they must obtain approval from the City Council for the off-site parking, as well as condition approval 7.1, that the exteriors and doors of the windows should remain closed during religious music and performances. And then lastly, 7.2, that if the user operations of the facility changes, that would result in an increase in the parking demand as a result of the operations, either a changing of the operations of the current user or a future user, then amendment would be required. So this application has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, as well as Beaches Parks and Recreation, and the Boys and Girls Club, and they have all indicated their support for the project. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the application, in that it complies with the development standards, as well as the architectural overlay, and is consistent with the general plan policies, as noted in your packet of information, and is recommending the project to be categorically exempt, approved, subject to the conditions of approval in your package that are in draft form. And that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is also available for any questions as well.
Okay. Before we recognize the applicant, first of all, thank you. This is a good report. Appreciate that. Does any, anyone have any questions of Mr. Campa? Mr. Crandall?
Just a quick one, John. Is there a reason the hours of operation chart isn't in the resolution or the conditions of approval?
It was not included in there, just due to their hours of operation are remaining the same. However, the Planning Commission does feel the need to incorporate that in there as a condition of approval, since there is just one user of the site. That's why staff didn't incorporate that in there. However, that could be incorporated as a condition of approval to ensure no overlapping uses are occurring at any particular time.
Just to support the...
Shared parking.
Parking. Shared parking. Okay.
Yeah, because it will run with the land. So, any other questions? Let me recognize Vice Chair Camp, and then we'll go to Commissioner McCann.
It mentions here that the landscape plan was included, but I...
Here we go. Oh, it is in here.
Should be the last page, I believe, of the PDF, or the last two pages.
Which I can mention to you, we'll go to staff. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, it didn't, didn't get included in mine for some...
Yeah, why don't we pause you, come back to you if you have questions, and Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Regarding the seven parking spaces, is there adequate backup maneuvering room behind those spaces to be utilized?
Yes, that was evaluated by staff, as well as engineering, and determined that there was adequate space as existing.
Okay, thank you. Is the second, the existing second-story element, is that being, is that facade being moved closer to the street, or is it staying in the same alignment and just extending down?
I believe it's moving closer towards the street slightly.
Condition 7.2, about if the use changes, then an amendment would be required. What might that look like? Because at that point, you know, the sanctuary would already be built and everything, how, you know, how would you envision that going forward?
So if maybe additional off-site parking was required, or there was a desire, basically right now, as proposed, it means parking requirements with the off-site parking, based on one seat per four parking spaces. If there results in an increased intensity with a different user or a change in operations, staff wanted to provide flexibility to the city to require an amendment to come in, to further evaluate the project, to see if any additional measures were needed to ensure no impacts to the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Steve, you're good? Okay. Mr. Jamian, are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, so we're gonna, I'm gonna recognize you as the applicant, and you'll have 10 minutes to make your presentation. Does that sound all right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have anything in that.
Why don't you come on up and just introduce yourself and see if we have any questions? Welcome to, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Herman Jamian. I represent Cobra Design. My firm designed the actual Habad expansion. John Campa, the planner, he covered most of everything that we discussed, going back the last two, three years. And essentially, we followed the standards that were brought upon by the city, Spanish colonial architecture. And if there's any specific questions to the building, design, or architecture, I can answer that.
Terrific. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jamian, the architect? I've not seen any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anything, I can come back up.
Terrific.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I think it's time to move into our discussion. Unless we have, do we have any last questions of staff or anything like that? Are we ready to discuss this?
Chair? I believe we have public questions.
Yes, excuse me. That's right. Do we have a card here for Christine Lambert? Ms. Lambert, did you want to speak on this matter? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm surprised I'm the only speaker.
Yes. I almost missed you, too. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm Christine Lambert. I'm a local architect who's lived here for, since 1976, so I've been here a long time. And I was a little bit involved in this project. I was consulted with Herman and worked with him a little bit about the Spanish design in the beginning. And I just wanted to speak in favor of this project and say that when the rabbi and his family moved here years ago, we reached out to them to welcome them here. And over the years, they've become a very important part of this community, and not just the Jewish community. I've seen many residents in San Clemente celebrating with the Habad on the pier for Hanukkah and at the outlet center during the Hanukkah holiday, not just the Jews here in town, but also a lot of us other people. My husband is Jewish, and I'm Catholic, so our family's mixed, and so we've been involved. But I just wanted to say the expansion of the Habad, it's a, it's going to be a beautiful new sanctuary on the second floor. And it'll give them more room for their services and events. But obviously, the building that's there now wasn't designed to be any kind of religious building. But the rabbi and his team have done a great job of making it work, and the new sanctuary space on the second floor will be really very beautiful, very light and airy, tall ceilings, lovely space. And I personally believe that parking is not going to be a problem. It's currently not a problem, and I don't really think that they're going to increase the capacity, need to increase the number of people that come there. They have the seven parking spaces now, and there's a lot of street parking. And because this is an Orthodox Jewish Habad, you're not really allowed to walk, to drive to service. You're really supposed to walk, even though some people don't, and that's okay. So just wanted to say the rabbi and his wife, Zippy, have done a great job here in town, and wanted to thank them and say, please, consider approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to, is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak on this? Because we're going to close the public hearing and move into...
Yes.
We have one more speaker?
Yes.
Please. Come on up, just if you don't mind introducing yourself.
I didn't feel, go ahead. I gave him, thinking he was the applicant.
Oh.
That he did need to give you a card, so if you can give him...
Oh, get the card later, no problem.
He gave me a pass on the card.
Yes. That's his prerogative.
Hi, my name is Rabbi Slavin.
Welcome.
Together with my wife, Zippy, we moved to this town 20 years ago to start the Habad Jewish Center. And we started off really, really small. We operated out of a clubhouse, then out of a hotel, the Best West, used to be the Best Western, now the Casablanca Inn. And then about 10 years ago, we bought the building. And we are delighted to be able to create community and a place for the Jewish people in San Clemente to come and worship and celebrate their religion. And, you know, we've been doing it for the last 10 years, sort of making it work. As Christine said, the building was not built to be a center for Jewish life, but we're super excited to be able to do it now, and in the process, enhance the way the buildings on that street look. It's going to be stunning. It's going to be the talk of town, perhaps the nicest Jewish center in Orange County, which will hopefully bring more people to come on to see it. So I hope you'll consider approving the project. I also just wanted to mention, I wanted to thank John very, very much. He put in a tremendous amount of work into this for probably two years now, constantly fine-tuning the project, and all the members of our community that came out here today to support us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rabbi. Appreciate your comments, and thank you to all those that came out and supported as well. Anybody else?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Lerner. I'm one of the members of the congregants of the Habad house. So a couple things, two things that I think are pertinent. One is because the center exists, that has held us and our families in town, and we continue to support the local business as a result, and but for Habad, it probably wouldn't have been. We would have moved to another area. But the second most important criteria is the outreach that Habad has, this Habad, with the military. Camp Pendleton specifically, families are helped and assisted, and they know that, and Habad knows that. It's a great center that people can find themselves, not limited to religion, but to limited to, but extended to families across the board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Did you want to speak? Please, come on up. Welcome, sir.
Hello, my name is Orbi. I am 10 years old, and I go to Hebrew school. I love it because it makes me feel safe and comfortable, because I'm Jewish, and I go there, and it's very fun. And I love it because I get to do crafts and other stuff. I'm going to be bar mitzvahed there, and it just makes me feel really comfortable. I like it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a terrific job.
Thank you, Orbi. (applause).
Chair? Can I ask one question?
Commissioner McCann, yes.
Just out of curiosity, because the rabbi mentioned that many people are here in support. I'm just curious, by a show of hands, how many people attend the center right now that are here to support? Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Sir speaks well to have this much support. All right. Does anyone else want to speak? Okay. Seeing no more speakers, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now turn to my colleagues for discussion on this application. Who'd like to lead us off? Maybe someone from our Design Review Subcommittee? Vice Chair Camp? Thank you.
So we reviewed this project, I guess it was back in December, and we looked at it twice, and though it was, it was a good design, there were some features, I think, that we requested, that they have come back, and I think it's a, it's a good improvement. I can understand the reluctance to add the scallop details, which are not critical by any means. I don't think we need to be concerned about that. So from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it's a win. You know, I'm inclined to vote in favor of the project. We had a little bit of concern about the parking across the street and the fact that the crosswalk was down the road a little bit, but really, it appears not that many people drive, which is great. I mean, I think if, if people are walking to the services, I have to commend you for that. And John, great job with the, with the follow-up and the report, so it's all positive on my end.
Terrific. Anybody else want to? Commissioner Crandall?
I'll just jump in. One quest, one comment for John. There are a number of cases where throughout the report that call it a conditional use permit rather than a minor conditional use permit. Might do some house cleaning before it goes into the final files, et cetera, just to clean it up. And then I am on the conditions of approval, I do think, just for clarity, under section 7.0 in the, I guess it's resolution, I'll be held on, that we put the date of, the hours of operation, just so in perpetuity, people will know if we aren't here and you aren't here, what the parking was based on. And it'll also help City Council to review approving the off-site parking agreement. That's it. I agree with Steve on this, and I can make the findings as you listed them for both the development permit and the minor conditional use permit and the sequel findings.
Anybody? Any other discussion?
I do.
Okay. Chair Protem McCacken, and then I'm going to recognize Commissioner Prescott Lauffler.
My concerns are with parking, but 7.2 does talk about operations, if the operations change. And if the report is kind of like an integral part of the resolution, then we do have its hours of operation right now. Isn't that correct? So if we've changed, if the, if the hours or use would change from your report, that would bring 7.2 up if someone were to complain.
That would be a correct statement.
Right. Now, with you... Now, with use, I wasn't clear on what the report kinda said on use, especially the sanctuary area. Is it solely worship, or, say, study by the Shabbat itself? Or can they rent it out, say, like for a wedding, for members of the Jewish community that are outside of San Clemente?
So with the religious use, it's, it's common for there to be types of, you know, religious services that aren't for their typical services? So, at that point in time, if there was a larger event, they could possibly obtain a special activities permit to evaluate a higher intensity of use for a...
If there was a wedding or some kind of religious ceremony, for someone who lived outside the community that wanted to use the building, you know, for their wedding service or whatever, a lot of those people would not be walking to the ceremony. Do we address that in the report? Because the neighbors might become upset, or the parking across the street at the ballpark, you know, could become full, and so would the street.
So as, as evaluated, the project complies with the parking standards if the off-site parking agreement is obtained, and that one, one space per four seats, it would be part of that. So in any event, if they were to exceed that, then that's where they would either have to get a special activities permit or an amendment to their conditional use permit. And obviously, if it were to change into more of a wedding venue or something in that matter, then that would also be a change in the use, which would require an amendment.
Then you'd call it more just worship service in that building amongst the members?
With the churches, it's common for there to be weddings or other events that were to, that were to occur in those particular spaces, but...
Would they have to do anything? Get a permit if they were to have a wedding from someone outside that was gonna bring 35 cars or 45 cars?
It may, it may need to come through some form of review, whether it be a special activities permit, if it's not occurring on a Saturday from, from the 9:30 to 11:30 timeframe.
A wedding ceremony or other religious ceremony could only be between those hours on Saturday or Friday or Sunday that are in this report.
Yeah, if I could comment real quickly. So the shared parking agreement would be, in some ways, the governing piece here, and so if, if the request through the shared parking agreement is only to have license to use those spaces on Saturday morning, then yes, they would be limited to those hours. But the, I think what John was indicating is that between the combination of onsite and off-site parking, the capacity that they have to have religious services, that occupancy number would remain the same for any kind of a special event. So a wedding would still have, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but 50 people, just for sake of argument, if they have 50 people at a service, they could have 50 people at a wedding. If they go beyond that, which is covered in the report, then they, that's, would be a trigger for a temporary use permit, which would be evaluated independently, and have to take into consideration whether additional transportation needs, need to be incorporated into any of those types of events.
So the city's interpretation that the wedding would have to happen within these operating hours?
If that's the, the final window of time that's designated by the council within the shared parking agreement, if the council determines that, that those hours could be expanded beyond the limited period on Saturday morning, then the, the same capacity would follow whatever the hours are within that agreement that the council enters into.
Okay. Can I chime in on that?
Yep.
So the parking, the 17 spaces, that's based on the zoning requirement for assembly use, regardless of if it's a religious service or whatever, assembly. So if they had an assembly use in there during those hours, they're allowed to do that by right. Is that what we're understanding?
Correct.
Okay. So I think that, I mean, the size of the space limits the number of people that could be in there.
Well, depends, are there pews? I'm just, so that everybody knows, so the neighborhood isn't surprised if they were to have a big event in the sanctuary, if, you know, if there aren't set pews there, then you could have a much larger event than 68 people, or, and that's all I'm trying to explore, is so that the neighborhood and everybody else wouldn't be surprised if there was an event that had 100 people with 50 cars or 60 cars showing up.
You can't get that many people in there.
Well, you have 68 seats. What does it say, a maximum of 100 people?
Parking is based on one, I think, one stall per four seats, correct?
Correct.
The standard. So the assumption is that not every single person is gonna drive themselves to an event. I mean, that's the zoning requirement for the parking. So some cities I know have one per three, but apparently here in San Clemente, it's one per four. So that's where they get the 17 spaces. So they're, so in other words, they're meeting the requirement for assembly use of that space, and the park, the required parking, regardless of what goes on there.
We're also, we're also... Somewhere it said you could have 100 people in that, it said maximum of 100 people. It says 63.
Well, I don't know if it's for me to explain this, but there's two, there's two factors. If it's parking, if we're talking about parking, then it's based on the number of seats, or it's based on the square footage. If it's a fire code requirement, it's based on seven square feet per person, which you could never get in there in a comfortable manner. So the 100 that they're talking about, like right here, actually, it says maximum seating 68. That's the fire code.
Well, why is it, why in this one corner it says occupant load 380?
Which one are you?
358, right here.
I mean, I think it's probably John's. I didn't mean to jump in on you.
You're looking at the patio.
Yeah, so, so the, so the facility was evaluated based on, the primary limiter is the parking, and so that's what's dictating the 68 seats for that Saturday service of up to the 68 people. Based on the size of the facility, as well as the exiting, it can accommodate for an increased number, however, which is typical for, you know, any other religious uses or any other use that has a limiting factor, which is typically parking, that is, that is what drives down that number. So again, the limiting factor here is the parking. And so, you know, if a religious use were to occur here onsite, they've got seven parking spaces, they could be utilizing the sanctuary. If it is a, you know, a general assembly type use, up to 20, 28 people, other considerations and permits could be evaluated by the city for increased numbers or changes of, of hours that have been already discussed.
Chair?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Are the seats permanent? Are they, like, are these seats hooked to the floor? Or can the whole room be opened up?
I don't believe these are pews. These are, these are not fixed to the ground, is my understanding.
Chairs that can be moved up or folded?
That's my understanding, yes.
To decide so that the whole room can be open. Okay, well, that's just my concern, because it's not really 68, you have a room that could be a lot bigger, and there could be a function that has more than, you know, 68 people. What if you had a dance? They'd have to get a special permit? I'm just, you know, it's real tight parking, and there's a lot of functions here that can be a lot more than 68 people.
Did you request a layout for 68 seats in this room?
Yes, so we evaluated the desire of the applicant in terms of the capacity, as well as the available parking, and assessing what the likely city council comfort would be in terms of allocating off-site parking at the city facility, and so staff agreed upon 10 off-site parking spaces, which, which landed at the 68. So we were, we were not gonna allow for additional seating to be identified, and that's why it's been placed on as is.
Okay, so that's not based on the size of the room?
Correct.
It's, so, yeah, that's interesting.
So yeah, that, that's, that's an indicator of the parking supply, not the building code evaluation of the occupancy.
Okay, so regardless of how many seats they could fit in there, there's gonna be a maximum 68 on the door, which they're gonna be forced to abide by.
Right.
Okay.
Which is typical for most...
It has nothing to do with the size of the room.
Correct.
Seems like you would have wanted to see a layout with 68 chairs in there.
I think that's what's presented.
There's 68, there's 68 chairs there. I counted it.
This?
Yeah.
This is not...
It is.
This?
Yeah.
Okay, I counted it.
Can I, can I?
I'm gonna recognize Commissioner McCann, and I do wanna not forget Prescott Loeffler. So Scott, you're on this point, is that right, on the scene?
I am on this point, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, sorry. Just a couple thoughts, and I certainly hear what you're saying, Dr. McCacken. We're not giving them credit for the street parking along the frontage, to my knowledge.
Correct.
And it would seem too, that if they had a special event of some kind, that there's a lot of space in the parking lot, so they could valet park it and get a lot of cars on the site, you know, which they probably wouldn't want to do for Shabbat services, but if there was a special event, they could, they could swing that probably. So just a couple thoughts.
I'm not against it, I'm actually for the project, but I'm just saying, you know, since we also represent the neighbors who live, if you go down the back street, there's a lot of houses that can be impacted on the back, and I don't want them necessarily just be all of a sudden ticked off every time there's a, there's a program or something that goes on that there's really more than 68 people.
Okay. Can I add something to, or am I, I'm done with you?
Oh, you want to speak to that point directly?
Yeah.
Okay, let me reopen the public hearing, and then please, come on up, and I think it's a pertinent point, it'd be helpful, thank you.
Okay, okay. So a couple of stuff. First of all, thank you, but, and what Scott mentioned about valet parking, the one time we had an event that we had a lot of people, and we were afraid about parking, we did do valet parking at the beginning. So valet parking is a very big option when we have big events, and typically, we don't have big events, and we don't have large amount of people coming, so the capacity, this will, this will fill the parking. And, and for the second point, if we ever do get an event that's bigger, one of the things me and John talked about, is that we would need a special events permit, and that way, we'd have off-site parking or increase that capacity. But I would say, the amount of times a year that we might even want that kind of, that would go over the, the amount of people we have regularly is very, very small. You know, you're looking at maybe two or three times a year, not even. So just wanted to add that in terms of that. And, well, for the 10 years that we've been there, you know, we've had all kinds of events, I mean, our events are not gonna change, we never had a problem, like, nobody ever complained to us that, that we're having a problem with parking.
Before he sits down, can I ask?
Yeah.
So if you have a service, or you have more than 68 people show up, are you gonna turn people away?
Send them home? No.
Bad for business.
All I can say is that from your mouth to God's ears, that one day I have that problem, and then I have to come to the city council and say, I need to move and buy a new building. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Okay. Is there a reason why the room is as big as it is, even though, I guess, well, it comes back to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll tell you why I think it is. But that's, normally, we'd like to have, we have Shabbat services, and right after that, we sit down, usually, we would have a separate room where we could sit down and talk, we're doing it all in one room. So the same people that are sitting in the front are then gonna move to the back around the tables to have a light refreshments after the service. So it's the same room, using, you know, we can't, we can't set up two rooms at the same times, like this, we have, the room's gonna be big, the first half of it will be the sanctuary, and the back will be round tables for the same people, sorry, for the same people to go and sit there after the service.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question from the rabbi?
Oh, none of him.
Okay, can I recognize Karen? Yeah, so Commissioner Prescott Loeffler?
I appreciate all the comments, good questions, and thank you all for coming out. I'd love to see when a community comes together to support. The, they've always been a good neighbor, and looking at the project, from what it is now to what it's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful. Makes a really good use of space, plenty of street parking, and again, I will go back to that you've always been a good neighbor. So I'm confident that whatever the parking situation becomes, if you grow 10 times, that you will use the, the necessary methods to get your permits. The upgrades are very nice. Having special events there will certainly be an upgrade to this area. It needs to, that area needs to have some refresh, refreshing architectural design. I wanted to compliment the design review, you came up with some good suggestions, and tonight, it was also, also a very comprehensive report, and I wanna thank the staff. I'm completely in support of this project. I look forward to seeing the beauty that will add to this area. This has been an area that needs to, to improve, and I so appreciate that. And you know, I just love the Spanish design, so, again, that, that is a plus. So I would be in total support of this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, since I was the one that thought it was necessary to put in these hours of operation that were in our report, and I thought they needed to be available to whoever reviewed this. John, does the parking agreement ever include hours of operation to say when that, those spaces are available to them?
They can, yes. They don't always, but they can.
Because, one of the reasons I did it, I wanted them the opportunity that if you see times when you think you might be expanding this chart in the future, trying to avoid having you jump through hoops to get that, would it be appropriate to say, if we didn't put these hours, hours of operation in, but gave staff the opportunity to work with the applicant to modify this and massage it till you think you're really covered, and then, so this moves along through the process, say that those hours of operation might be put in the parking agreement, that city council will be approving, and not putting them in this document where you'd have to come back and amend this document?
How do you feel about that, Jonathan?
I have no problems with that.
Okay. I like that better.
That would be my request.
I'd like to see the flexibility for the applicant.
Exactly.
So, I like that direction. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Crandall?
No, I'm in, I can make all the findings, including putting that into the conditions of approval where Mr. Champa thinks, or taking it out and putting something in the conditions of approval.
While you're looking at a, let me make a few comments while you're looking at a...
And put the schedule, and I think just expand that 7.2 condition of approval to include a, what the parking hours and numbers are based on, that the city council approves.
All right, so just for the purpose of the audience, we, we have two things we're kind of moving back and forth between, which I, it can be confusing. First is the permit to build, to do the improvement, and everybody here is unanimously excited about that. You've done a wonderful job, Mr. Jamian, your team, it's a beautiful upgrade to our community, so for that, thank you very much. The second item that we're kind of bouncing around with is the minor conditional use permit, and I think, I think we're all, we're all in agreement that the four findings we need to make there, we can make. So Rabbi, I'd like to thank you and your family for your service to our community. This is a excellent project. I think we're lucky to have you, and the... have you, and the work that did it, went into the redesign, I think is going to contribute to the beauty of our community, so I want to thank you and support this project, we have on the development permit, seven findings we need to make, I can make all seven findings as well, and I am prepared to entertain a motion at this time.
Chair?
Yep.
Can I chime in on this?
Yep.
I just want to echo the, the thoughts and comments of my fellow commissioners, I think it's an excellent project, I really appreciate the community that you've built in our building, and I hope this brings great success to you, I think the architecture's awesome, my one little thing that I just want to get on record of concern is, which I greatly appreciate, condition seven-point-two, but make sure that has appropriate teeth, because regarding the parking, and the offsite parking agreement and stuff, I'm in support of that, in large part because most of the members walk to Shabbat services, so to the extent that the use changes in the future, then that would, you know, could go down the road where Dr. McCacken's talking about, where what if it was a wedding venue, and there was lots of, you know, there was over demand for parking, so I'm in support, but I like seven-point-two, and I assume you guys feel good about that, the which written?
Yeah, I think we're good with that, so, and John, John and I have had some conversations about this, and one thing that would likely be different with this parking agreement would also be a clause related to non-assignment, so I, I don't think that we would intend for this particular parking agreement to be transferable.
Okay.
So, if there's a change in the operator, or the use of this building in the future, they would need to pursue their own agreement.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, that, that covers us, since entitlement's run with the land, not the applicant, so, that's kind of why we're coming at all those different angles, does someone want to make a motion, or do you want me to make it?
I'll make a motion.
Terrific.
I reckon, I recommend to approve staff's recommendation to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA, pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15301, and adopt resolution PC 24012 approving amended development permit, AMDP 20-399, and minor conditional use permit CUP 22-430, Shabbat Jewish Center, subject to attached conditions, which will approve the modification of item number seven-point-two, with the, with what, the required-
That-
Parking hours?
Required parking hours are represented in the parking agreement.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation, yeah.
Yeah, which is approved by city council, not us.
So that's a recommendation to city council?
Yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Chair Protem McCacken, and a second from Commissioner Prescott Loeffler, do we have any discussion on the, on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, congratulations. Our actions tonight are subject to a thirty-day appeal period, and the subsequent parking agreement entered into with the city through the city council.
Chair, could I just clarify real quick, a ten-day appeal period?
Ten days, okay, thank you, again, thank you very much, everybody, for coming tonight, we appreciate-
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Jonathan, Jonathan, did you want a break?
If we could take a, a brief recess to set up some materials that were submitted to staff, that would be helpful, yes.
Yeah, so we received some presentations from the community, we want to get those loaded, so Jonathan, five, ten minutes? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. If I could ask everybody to take their seat, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. I'll call our planning commission meeting back to order after a brief break, for staff to prepare their presentation, and I would like to introduce our next agenda item, which is item eight B, public hearing, project twenty-four dash two-four-nine Sea Cliff Boutique Motel and Restaurant at 402 Pasadena Court, it's a request to consider an eleven-unit boutique motel and a restaurant with twenty-five outdoor seats at a historic property located at 402 Pasadena Court within the Pier Bowl. I will now open the public hearing, before I ask for the staff to present their presentation, I want to just turn to my colleagues briefly and just ask if we have any ex parte or conflicts that they want to disclose at this time. Commissioner Crandall?
I don't think it's, I received one phone call on the project, just asking for quick information, we didn't discuss the, my position at all, it was just strictly a inquiry.
Was it with the applicant?
No.
Okay.
It's a member of the public.
That's what we're looking for.
Member of the public.
Right, and I did, I want to disclose that I, I've been to the site many times, most recently, I was there on Sunday, walking on Casador and Avenida Victoria to observe the property, any, any other disclosures or ex parte communications, Commissioner Prescott Loeffler?
I've also been to the site several times.
Several times, okay, anybody else? Okay, so-
Well, if we're disclosing that we've been-
Yeah.
To the site, yeah, I've been there.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Fifty, fifty times.
Okay.
Just driving by?
No, 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 if you went there specifically to evaluate the site.
If you drove by to specifically look at the property.
Yeah, then, yeah, sure.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I drove by to look at it.
Okay, very good.
I've been to the site as well.
Okay, very good.
But not fifty times.
It's not a competition, okay, for the members of the audience, I just want to review what our process is tonight, first, we're going to do a staff report, and there will be some engagement with the staff on that report, there'll be questions, there'll be some back and forth, so that may take some time, after that, then the applicant gets ten minutes to make their presentation, then we follow that with any questions from us to the applicant, and after that, we have public comment, as, so right now, I have eighteen blue cards to speak, and if you would like to join this elite group of eighteen, please feel free to bring your blue card up, and we'll recognize you during public comment, which is limited to three minutes, and then we will have our discussion, just as, and it's sim, exact same format as we just did in the last public hearing, so with that, I invite the staff to make their presentation, and I want to recognize David Cabrillo to do that, and Jonathan Lightfoot, our city planner, welcome both of you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, good evening, members of the commission, so, this is the outline and the points that will be covered today, and we'll start with the introduction, followed by the setting and zoning, the land use, site plan, design and architecture, and then conclusion, and I will make some time and pause Commissioner Cosgrove if, whenever I feel it's necessary, to allow the commission to ask any questions of staff, since it is a complex project.
And to make this a little bit interactive, you don't want to say, have a save, if there's something at that moment, you'd like to hear it, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes, unless you want me to just continue.
No, it's, it's your, it's your report, yeah.
So, to start with the introduction, this is a brief project description, so we all understand what is being proposed as we go through the presentation, so it is a eleven-unit motel with accessory uses such as a pool and spa and a meeting room, it'll include a restaurant with twenty-five outdoor seats, a parking garage with eleven spaces, additional parking is also provided, which we'll cover in the further slides, this also includes the preservation of the existing residence in the fountain, and the rehabilitation of the run-off with flanking stairs and the lower terrace patio, and again, we'll identify these items in the further slides, to the right is an image showing two, two graphics, the top is a historical image of the property with development that is, in, in the background that is not existing today, in the foreground is the subject residence, the four-level residence, and then right below that image is a rendering of the project, and we can see some reflection of the historical property with the stairs, the angled wall, and some landscaping that's provided at the front. And here's another rendering, as viewed from an aerial perspective, so here we see the existing residence to the left, again, it's a four-level residence, and the development would be happening to the right of that, things, things to point out here, some elements would be the, the run-off with the stairs leading to the fountain, which will be preserved, we have two standalone, two-story buildings, we have another building here, and then this is a shed roof, it's not really, it's not housing any units, and then we see the, the lower terrace patio here that will be rehabbed as well, along with common areas such as the pool. The restaurant seating would be here, the outdoor seating.
And where's the kitchen?
Kitchen will be in the ground level, below the, the seating. So moving on to the setting and zoning, so the project, as mentioned, is at 402 Pasadena Court, it's within the Pier Bowl specific plan, its zoning is a classification that's specific to this property, it's- It's coastal recreation commercial one, and with three overlay districts. The first one being the architectural, the second one being a visitor-serving commercial district, and then the coastal zone overlay district. It's also worth noting here that it is adjacent to a public view corridor, as seen on the left image. The project site is highlighted in yellow, and then you see the view corridor labeled in D. So the property significance has to do with its date of construction in 1927 during the Ole Hansen and Spanish Village by the Sea period of development. Staff is not 100% sure that the architect was the original Westbrook, but permit records do show that he was the architect for the garden, so it is assumed that he was possibly the architect for the original residence as well. Something to note here, the DPR forms, these are forms that identify character-defining features, do identify the garden as a significant feature, which includes the fountain and run-off with flanking stairs. And we can see that on the image to the right. This is a historical photo. And I'll also note, too, that the forms do indicate that the property appears eligible for a national registered listing. Surroundings and topography, it is adjacent to multifamily residences to the north, east, south, and west. It's also budding three historic residences, or properties, better said, which also includes the beach comber, as seen down at the bottom, down here. It is worth noting as well, the slope of the lot, so it has a downward slope going from east to west. So on the public view corridor, this was analyzed and must be analyzed to determine compliance with the Pier Bowl specific plan. The applicant provided a photo simulation at the bottom right compared to the existing condition now. So per this analysis and changes that were done to the project, which I'll discuss in further slides as well, staff has determined that there are no impacts to the public view corridor. Slope stability has been a topic that's been brought up during the review process. This is an area that is reviewed through the building permit plan check process, not typically through a discretionary review process. However, in response to community concerns, the applicant did provide a preliminary geotechnical assessment, which made some findings and concluded that there will be some soldier piling and lagging to support the construction. There's also a conclusion that the project actually does improve the geological stability of the site and surrounding properties, and this is an assessment that staff is in agreement with. We also do have the applicant's geotechnical engineer present if any questions arise as we go. Are there any questions? The commission? No, okay. So now, moving on into the land use portion. The proposed use, again, is an 11-unit boutique motel with accessory uses including a pool, garage, decks, and patios, and a restaurant. The Pier Bowl specific plan, the coastal land use plan, and the general plan clearly identify these types of uses as visitor-serving and pedestrian-oriented, which is a requirement of these documents for properties in this area. And again, so this property and this table here shows that the project is in compliance with these regulatory documents. Moving on to the site plan. So this is a good image to just absorb before we move on. This is the existing condition, and this is a view taken as if you're right over Pasadena Court, looking towards the ocean. So again, the existing residence is here. We have some landscape...existing landscaping to the right of the existing residence, as you move towards the corner of Casador and Victoria. And then to the left of the building, we see the open space or garden portion. We see the run-off with the flanking stairs, the fountain, and the currently deteriorated terrace patio.
So isn't that where you have to go for the next one? That's my question.
Yeah.
So the five parking spots on Pasadena Court.
Correct, yes, no.
And that would be used by hotel patrons?
We did add a condition of approval that would limit the use of those parking spaces to motel guests and employees.
But to get...to get there, they would have to come down the one-way street, right? And then turn left onto Pasadena Court?
Correct. So to touch on the existing features, this graphic here is one that was taken off of the GPA Historic Resources Technical Report provided in the staff report as an attachment. So in yellow, we see the items that will be rehabilitated and restored, which is the existing residence and the fountain. And then the stairs with the run-off will be removed to be salvaged and then reconstructed in the same location. And then we see the lower terrace patio, which would be reconstructed again, which would accommodate the outdoor restaurant seating. So here, I'll discuss the items and the bullet points. So the first one is the public access plan. This is a requirement, a specific requirement for this property in the Pier Bowl specific plan, that a public access plan be provided, which shows how the project provides access to the property for the public. And within this public access plan, the applicant has identified the motel and restaurant itself as a way for the public to visit and have access to the site. And more directly, per the Pier Bowl specific plan, it does encourage public spaces such as a public view deck, which is down here to the right. So that'll also be provided, and that is to be open to the public as well. So we have some stairs that will connect Casador to Victoria and leading to that public view deck. Setbacks, setbacks are...
I'll interrupt just for a second.
Oh, yes.
So is that the only public access area on site?
They're...well, they're identifying the restaurant and the motel as part of the public access plan, but there's some entry points here. There's a stairway up here, and there's another stairway down here, closer to the...
Split in two pieces?
Thank you.
Yeah.
David, can you tell me if on that view deck, I see one entrance? Is that the only entrance, or is there an exit out on Pasadena?
So it shows, my understanding is that the public would be able to access the public view deck, well, using the stairs down in Victoria. If you're on Pasadena Court, you won't be using the stairs to get to the deck, but there's no, to my knowledge, is no specific entry or exit. I think you can enter and exit from either point.
Thank you.
Yeah. So again, so setbacks are shown here, the setback dashed lines here for the development, which are in compliance, the project is in compliance with. Parking, the five parking spaces off Pasadena Court are here. We have one, two, three, four, five, and then we have the 11 parking spaces and the ground-level garage, and also including one additional parking space within one of the existing single-car garages. So that'll equate to 17 parking spaces in total for the project.
Those access points, one, two, three, along Pasadena, are those controlled? So like, would somebody park one of the five parking spots? If you park there, then you have to walk to the right down Pasadena Court to that first opening? Is that going to be a controlled gate right there, so that the member of the public can't just walk in from Pasadena Court?
I would assume so, since that would be the motel portion of the development, but we can have the applicant clarify. So moving on to the trash component. So initially, the trash enclosure was proposed at the top of Pasadena Court, which occupied one parking space that you see here to the far left. Through the design review process, public comments were received, and there were concerns with the trash enclosure being close to the residential development to the left of the site plan, related to odor, noise, and additional traffic for the trash to be serviced. So in response, the applicant did revise the plans and now provided the trash enclosure within two of the existing single-car garages. So two of those single-car garages would be remodeled to accommodate that trash enclosure. And that's off of Avenida Victoria. Building placement, just briefly, that is, again, inspired by the public access plan, the setbacks. We have the Secretary of Interior Standards, which we'll discuss briefly in the coming slides. But you see here how the building placement of the existing residence relates to these two new standalone two-story buildings. And then we have, what seems to...yeah, another third building here, also around the central open space area. So a feature that is common in Spanish culinary revival architecture, to have open courtyards and open landscapes. We also have some building encroachments that the Public Works Department would want to legalize through this process, and I'll identify those here. So we have a slight encroachment here at the...this portion off of Victoria. And then along Casador Lane, we have another slight encroachment. So that explains the requests or the process of the discretionary encroaching permit that you see in the staff report. There will also be some sidewalk easements that'll be processed here, and you see the sidewalk as it goes from the left all the way around down Casador and around to Victoria, and how it goes into the private property. So for whatever...any portions of the sidewalk that goes within the property would require a sidewalk easement. So the project's compliance with the Pier Bowl specific plan is listed here. They have provided a public access plan, which staff is in agreement with and supports. The setbacks are met. The height, I didn't mention the height limit, but the limit here is that the new development stay below the existing residence, and they have provided documentation that demonstrates that. And this is, again, allowed use with the conditional use permit, the motel portion. And here we see its compliance with the Title 17, the zoning ordinance, and Title 12. So again, the project provides 17 parking spaces, 12 for the motel and five for the restaurant. The trash enclosure provides its required screening and architectural compatibility with the existing building. And then as far as Title 12, the project includes a discretionary encroaching permit for the building encroachments, and also sidewalk easement agreements are part of the project as well. Any questions?
Hold on. Just, I want you to clarify that the encroachments are existing, and you're just clearing up the paperwork for existing encroachments that are basically grandfathered in.
Correct.
Okay.
So design and architecture. So the project was reviewed two instances by the Cultural Heritage Subcommittee, and at the first meeting, we have some notable project or public comments that were provided. First, that the project should be simplified. There were concerns, again, with the trash enclosure and its location, and issues related to odor, noise, and traffic. There were massing concerns, as you can see to the right. There's a lot more building mass and height, both vertically and horizontally, compared to the current design. There was also, with this first design, a loss of guarding features and lack of landscaping that was brought up, and also obstruction of the public view corridor. That's identified in the regulatory documents. So at the second DRC meeting, the applicant presented revised plans, which addressed the comments from the first meeting. And the major changes are here. The building mass was reduced. More landscaping was provided to better reflect the historical nature of that side of the property. The lower terrace patio originally was not being kept, but they, in their second design, kept it and are going to rehab it. The ground-level restaurant seating was removed, which opened up more opportunities for parking and bicycle parking as well. And then another major change would be the relocation of the trash enclosure, which now we can see that the trash enclosure would be right here in these two single-car garages. So this is a good graphic here, it's showing the first design in comparison to the now the current design. So images that we already presented. So the first one, again, you can see it's massing both vertically and horizontally, the lack of landscaping to the current design, which is more reflective of this historical image. To guide the architecture, we have the sets of design guidelines within the Pier Bowl specific plan. We have a general design guidelines document that the city uses, and we also have the Henry Lenny Design Guidelines. The project has shown compliance and consistency with all these documents. And again, the...I think it's been noted already, but the required style of architecture is Spanish culinary revival, which is what's being proposed. And this is all consistent with the general plan and coastal land use plan policies as well. I won't go through all of these, but this is just a list of some examples, some guidelines that are in the staff report, which the project is consistent with. And again, another aerial of the proposed project. So the project must be consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. I do explain in the report that there are four treatments, and part of our role is to identify which treatment best fits the project. In this case, it's the rehabilitation set of standards, which is a set of 10 standards. The applicant did provide a Historic Resource Technical Report that was put together by GPA. The report concludes that the project is consistent with the standards and therefore exempt from CEQA under Class 31 for the historic preservation portion of the project. The city did require a pre-review of this report, which is completed by Kim Lee-Horn Consulting. And they were in agreement with the findings and conclusions provided by GPA. And again, the table to the right shows its compliance with the SOI standards, the general plan policies, and coastal land use plan policies. The general plan and coastal land use plan also call for consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards. So in conclusion, staff has identified three categorical exemptions. We have Class 1 for existing facilities. This will cover the existing home or residence that's being remodeled and repurposed. Class 31, the historical resource restoration and rehabilitation exemption, which would cover the historic preservation part of the project. And then Class 32, infill development projects, which would cover the new development in the, in the garden area. And then we also have related environmental review documents that support the CEQA exemptions here. So under the 2019 Pier Bowl specific plan amendments and that EIR addendum, areas like the noise, odor, traffic, and air were reviewed, which are areas that the Class 32 exemption requires to be, to be reviewed. So during that process, the amendment included adding land uses that, to the Pier Bowl specific plan, which are similar to what's being proposed here, the Motel and the restaurant. That was found to be consistent overall with the general plan program, EIR. So in summary, the project is in compliance with the coastal land use plan, the general plan, the Pier Bowl specific plan, Title 17, and the Secretary of Interior Standards. So staff is recommending that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 1, 31, and 32, and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. Now, staff is also recommending a few modifications. The first one would be added to the resolution to clarify that the existing building is four levels. There are some areas that it refers to it as three levels. And then we have some more changes here to correct the resolution and add missing numbers to conditions of approval. And we have a, a condition of approval to add 5.14, which is in relation to signage for the public view deck. And we're also open to any additional or modifications to conditions as directed by the commission. So this concludes our presentation. We do have the applicant and his team available. And I believe they actually have a presentation as well. Thank you.
Okay. David, that was comprehensive. I appreciate it. I want to acknowledge that you have been working on this quite, quite a number of months, years. And I want to thank you for that. And three of us, my colleagues here, Vice Chair Camp and Commissioner Crandall, and I serve on the Design Review Subcommittee. We've seen this project a few times. We've had hours of discussion with the applicant, so we've seen this evolve. But other colleagues, it's their first time at it, so we may need some review. I want to call on the applicant, but before I do, I do want to speak into the record. Part of your report referenced this commercial recreation coastal areas, or CRC 1. It's, this is a very prominent historic project, right? It's got a historic building, it's a prominent location. And we have a unique situation with our planning documents, our land use documents, where we actually have this in a specific plan. And then within the specific plan, there's actually, this parcel is carved out in its own designation, which is now known as CRC 1. And for the record, and just for all our neighbors here, so that we're all on the same page, I want to read the definition of CRC 1, so we all know what that means. I think it's important that we're all have a level field of knowledge. So the CRC 1 area, I'm going to read, what I'm going to read to you now is word for word out of the Pier Bowl specific plan. "The CRC 1 area provides for coastal and recreational-serving commercial uses. But the site has been a residential use since the historic structure was developed in 1930. Therefore, if a project is pursued in the future, city goals must be balanced for the preservation of the historic resource with establishing visitor-serving commercial uses in the Pier Bowl. In this context, the permitted uses are to continue using the historic structure as a residential triplex or fewer dwelling units, or establish a bed-and-breakfast inn used with two or fewer guest rooms and one manager unit. If the structure were used as a bed-and-breakfast inn, the addition of visitor-serving accessory uses is encouraged, such as a café that fronts Avenida Victoria and a pedestrian path between Pasadena Court and Avenida Victoria that allows the public to access the onsite terrace garden. If this is not economically viable, the next best option is to adaptively reuse the structure as a lodging use and add small-scale development for visitor-serving commercial uses compatible with the historic structure and public view corridor. New development should be minimally visible from public streets. Maximize visibility of the historic structure and preserve historically significant features of the garden, such as the fountain and the tiled stairway. A project shall maintain the existing building height at the street frontage on Victoria, Avenue of Victoria, and Pasadena Court." This was adopted by the City Council for the City of San Clemente in December of 2019. And it is what we are using to make our findings tonight, is what I just read. So I want to make sure we're all understanding that. And with that, what I think would be best is if we just were to advance our hearing to the applicant presentation. So if the applicant wouldn't mind stepping forward. Our process, Mr. Holloway, are you going to lead it off? Okay, you're going to get 10 minutes. Once we, we may have some questions for you. Then we're going to take public comment. And then, Jim, we're going to invite you back up for another 10 minutes at the end of public comment, if you would choose to address any comments you heard from the public and want to answer any of their questions. Okay.
You stole my thunder a little bit, though, because, you know, those of you that have, you know, gone through DRSC, I always lead off with, with the comment. First, I have to meet, I have to make some introductions. Tonight, we have Larry and Joel Dunwall, the patient persistent owners of the, of the property there. They currently live there. We have Tony Masario, right, you'll see Tony later. We have Audrey Von Erns. You know, Aherns, you know the Aherns, the family here? I always get it mixed up with, with Audrey. And it's Von Erns. Did I get that right?
Aaron's.
Aaron's, still mess it up. But she's our historic preservation expert. And then an easier name, John Agers, our geologic scientist is, is here today as well. So as, as was just mentioned, there are many, many documents that govern the development of this site. The documents include the city's general plan, the city's local coastal plan, the Pier Bowl specific plan, and then, as noted, a very specific, you know, for this particular property, the CRC 1 zone, within the Pier Bowl specific plan. We also have the green code, which has got, you know, a lot of features in it that we may get into later if you wish to. The water quality codes, which are very rigorous these days and ties in with a geologic discussion, which may come up later. And OCFA, the fire codes, so, and other codes. So a lot of, lot of policy direction and codes that govern the development of this site. We are asking for no waivers, no exceptions, or no variances to any of those codes or policies. And in fact, we proactively implement many of the, of the policies that are embedded in those policy documents. And I'm going to give a couple of examples. First of all, cultural resources. We are rehabbing the major cultural resources on this site, those being the home, the runtle with the stairs, and the fountain. And we're also rehabbing some, some, some items that were not considered to be significant cultural resources because of deterioration that's occurred over the years. And you may hear later on that there's an old, you know, a historic resources report that's more than 20 years old, that considers the garden terrace as a significant cultural resource. But the, the current historic resources report and the peer review all concluded that the terrace garden is not a significant cultural resource because of its deterioration. And this brings me to one of my two most important points. If we do not find adaptive reuses that are economically viable and doable and implementable, then these, these structures just sit and they deteriorate over time and you lose them. The key to historic preservation is adaptive reuse, and that's what we're doing here. And that's, that's one of my most important points. The second is the, the public access areas that you have, have discussed, and I think David did a good job describing that. That, the next one is geologic stability. And we have the, the geologists here. It was a big point of discussion in the DRSC meetings. We can talk about that more later, but the key points are, the stability improvements will stabilize the, the site. It'll stabilize the cultural resources that are on the site, which are not on stable ground right now. And it has some benefit to the adjacent properties. And we, again, have that geological information available for more detailed discussion if you wish to, to get into that. All of those proactive improvements and implementation of policy occurs at no cost to taxpayers. And when we get into the geology, I want you to remember, you know, you know how many slope failures we've had all up and down the coast. Many of those are being handled by the city at the cost of millions and millions of dollars. And what I, but my last comment that I want to make or kind of observation is that the design is very, I think, creative. We're so lucky to have Tony working on this. But in today's vernacular, what you'd call this design is a multi-benefit, a multipurpose, multi-benefit design. It has that one structure, the parking structure, which is a bunch of concrete and steel. It, it provides the parking, the majority of the parking on the site. That parking will all have electric charging stations for the overnight guests. It will have office space, service areas for the restaurants. It has a moderate-priced unit down in this lower level. So it provides parking and a lot of functional uses as a part of that, that, that primary structure that accesses off of Avenida Victoria. The second thing is, the construction of that, that infrastructure, that's what creates the geologic stability for the site, for the site, for the cultural resources, and for the adjacent properties. That is a function of that parking structure that's being embedded off of Avenida Victoria. And thirdly, the third point is it provides that structure, provides the foundations for the main level of development, which has the pool, the other structures, et cetera. So what you get as a result of this multi-benefit design and this multipurpose design is tremendous cost efficiency. You're not building, you know, geologic stability over here and a parking structure over there. It's all combined. So that has tremendous cost efficiency, which leads to economic feasibility. The economic feasibility is what, what allows us to, to develop a product that's outstanding, it's a creative design. And I firmly believe that it's going to be a point of pride to residents of the community and beyond. So with that, I think I'm going to let Tony take over and walk you through the design features of the site, unless you have any questions.
You're on the clock, so we'll have to get Tony.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi. David, before you run, just a couple of technical comments. And I appreciate you bringing out the, the old, the original design versus the new design. And that was definitely heard by our team. And so when you see this, this is a video fly-through. So I really want to emphasize that we really went for the Village by the Sea and tried to create this sense of discovery. And so that's why there's kind of the separate buildings. And just to give you a sense of scale, the lots of, just under 18,000 square foot feet, the historic house plus garage is about 36. We're only proposing 5,400 square feet of new development for the units and another, just under 6,000 square feet for the parking garage. So, and our FAR is about a third of the max. So it just, again, as you see this, just to get the sense that we really tried to make sure that we were honoring that and keeping more gardens and keeping more open space. As far as the rooms, there are 11 lodging units. And eight of the 11 are suites that would have a bedroom plus a living room. So these are, these are nicer suites. And the thing about when you see the two standalone buildings, just keep in your mind, each of those footprints is about 520 square feet. That's, that's ADU kind of scale, so it's not particularly massive. Then a couple of comments on the Geotech. As Jim mentioned, it does, the, the foundation is stabilizing it. The thing to remember is, and the Geotech pointed this out to me, we're exporting 1,300 yards. So it's actually a lighter site. So this entire, everything below us, there's just less site to be had above it. Additionally, other than a couple of square feet in the front yard and that, that area of finger landscape, we're collecting all of the water. So there's no infiltration. And as the geologists will tell you, the Casa Romanica and all these spaces, they're failing when they get all this water in there. So there's all of the water now that hits the site. We collect, we filter, and we put it back, we put it out to the storm system. And then the last comment on the engineering. So typically, we're at concept level here, and we, we kind of have to sometimes move ahead as far as design. In the package that you saw, the full sets, we actually hired the, not only the Geotech to do the, they drilled 50 feet down into the ground. So not only did we get the geotechnical report, but we also hired the caisson and lagging engineer. So your drawing actually has engineering. So we, we felt like, conceptually, we all talked about, we're going to drill it, we know this. But I wanted to make sure, because of the depths and kind of the proximities to the neighbors, et cetera, to make sure not only conceptually does this work, but actually it works engineering. So I want you to know that in your package are the actual engineered drawings. We treat it as if it was a working drawing, as if I was going to be submitting this. And so it was engineered as well as reviewed by the Geotech, who kind of made their comments. And that's kind of the normal process that we would do. So I just want you to know that we took this very seriously and we went ahead and engineered it completely. So the actual size of the caissons and the depths that you see, that's a set of engineered construction drawings.
Tony, your 10 minutes is up. Did you have?
Can we just show the video? It's just about a minute and a half or two minutes?
Yep.
So this is the entrance, and we talked about the point of access. The stair on the left goes up to the house. But here's the kind of the garden entrance that we would be going up. So this is the Publix area, and they're going right on to the Garden Terrace Restaurant. And as a footnote, there is no cooking in the rest, in the kitchen. It is just a prep kitchen, so there's no hoods or any equipment like that. And so this is that back garden kind of seating area. And so this is that back garden kind of seating area. There's 25 seats, and you can see that everything's got views. Here, this is at the mid-level of the historical stair, and on this level, we have a spa as well as a fire pit level. And so you can see these two areas kind of look down at the pool and the garden area as well as the historic fountain. Now we're moving down the stairs, if you will. And these are the exact proportions and scale and runtle of those historic stairs. So now we're down here at kind of the fountain court level, and you can see that this looks over the, the restaurant area. This, this level's four feet higher than the restaurant, and that's the existing topography and the existing levels, and so we've just kept that consistent. And you can see the terracotta, we went, kept traditional with the terracotta flooring, but in the pool area and a couple of new areas, we offset some of the materials. So this last view is we're down at the further south corner of the garden restaurant, and as you can see, we turn back and we can look up towards the pool. You can see the fountain, you can see the runtle, you can see the historical stair. And last views are a couple of bird's eye. I want you to notice how much green there is. And again, I think the bird's eye really gives you the sense of that it feels like a village, and it's not just a giant building or buildings. And so you can really see like there's lots of sense of discovery, lots of spaces, and you've got water up on the top. That's the spa level. You can see the, the fountain and the pool, and I think this just gives you a, a good And again, we do have a historical consultant here and geological, if there's any specific questions for those. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to take a pause and just talk to my colleagues for a minute. I just want to get a consensus here. What I am recommending is we take public comment at this time, and then after we go through all the public comment, then maybe we can invite the architect and, and to come back, and we can ask all our questions kind of at the end. Does that sound all right with everybody? Fantastic. Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll talk to you, we'll talk to you on the other side of the public comment. Like, as I indicated before, I've got 18 speaker cards, so what I'd like to do is call three or four at a time, and if you hear your name, if you could queue up over here so that we can just keep it moving, I think that would be, that would be great. So I'm going to call the first four names up, and this is just in the order that the cards were handed to me. Yeah. And by the way, if you've heard your comment made before, and you just want to say you support that, that's totally fine, you know. First speaker is John Boland, followed by Melissa Boland, then Amanda Q., and then Kathy Ward. So if we could get the four of you guys moving up in this direction, that would be great. And then once we get through a couple speakers, then I'm going to call the next couple more. So John, you're first, followed by Melissa, then Amanda, and then Kathy. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Yes, I'm John Boland. I'm a general contractor with 35 years of experience, and I strongly oppose this project at Pasadena Court. This is a very quiet neighborhood on a very unique series of streets. Casador is a one-way street that tees into a hairpin turn, leading to Avenida Victoria. The other section is Pasadena Court, which is a narrow street that turns on a tight radius with a steep slope. Pasadena Court feeds 21 homes. There is no on-street parking for these 21 homes. This neighborhood parking is very impacted by beach traffic, restaurant staff, and is an overbuilt neighborhood. The project proposes to remove the historic wall and put in parking spaces in this already difficult section of the street. In my opinion, this design for parking should not be considered for this development. This development will bring a flood of deliveries, vehicles, staff, and guests. The already difficult site and its surrounding streets are already extremely difficult for emergency vehicles to maneuver this. This is a serious public safety concern. This undersized street serves 21 homes. In addition, this 100-year-old historic wall has unmatched views of the historic pier, beachcomber, and the historic gardens of the Robinson property. It has significant community value as a gathering spot for locals and visitors alike. The removal of this wall would seriously impact the community, culture, and spirit. It is my understanding that a rezoning of this property took place a few years ago without any public notice. Zoning went from residential high-density to CRC. I was told at the time of this rezoning that the zoning change would make it, make the development of the subject property virtually impossible. Again, the public was not made aware of this change. This property, this project is, will be mutually injurious to the surrounding community, quality of life, safety concerns, and environmental concerns as well. I have serious concern for the slope and site development of this project. The site mirrors Casa Romantica on the opposite side of the Pier Bowl. It is my opinion that the beachcomber below could experience structural failures due to such a project. This development project is too big for our community, and the entire Pier Bowl will be affected during this extensive development allowed. I ask that the council refer this project for continuance. The project needs a CEQA study, and I believe that an environmental impact report is needed. Please do not allow this development in our neighborhood.
Thank you for your comment. Melissa Boland, followed by Amanda Q., and then Kathy Ward.
Hi. I'm Melissa Boland. I also would ask the committee to offer a continuance on this project for the CEQA and the EIR. I think that's very important. A lot of my comments, I just thought of as you were reviewing the Shabod project. I'm concerned about the speed with which this project has been brought forth. The Shabod project was taking two to three years. I'm familiar with this project for maybe about a year and a half, and it's a much larger project. I'm concerned with the speed with which this is going forth. You also spend a lot of time discussing parking issues for Shabod. That's 68 people using the facility for three to four hours a week. We have this hotel situation where cars will park for overnight, all day. They will park on the streets. It's just not going to, it's silly to think that that won't happen, and parking is already seriously impacted. You also mentioned that you wanted, that in the Shabod project, you wanted to represent the neighbors regarding any additional noise from additional activities. I would ask for that same respect for the neighbors in this development. There will be additional activities should this project go through. There will be parties, concerts, there will be all kinds of things. Also, who's going to monitor any conditional use permits that need to be taken out on this property when any of these additional activities are planned? You also stated that you've had hours of discussions with the applicant regarding this project. I'd ask that you have hours of discussion with the residents regarding this project. Those who live here will be affected by the noise, not only of the building of the project, but once the project is completed, we won't be able to hear the, the noise of the ocean. We won't be able to hear the noise of the children laughing and playing on the, on the sand. We'll hear people laughing and eating and cooking and cleaning and parking and trashcans rumbling and all that sort of thing. That's not what we have in our neighborhood right now. Let's see. Also, I'm, I'm wondering, you mentioned garden access. Will the public be allowed past that terrace area? Will we be allowed to walk up the garden area and exit at the top where those five parking spots are, which, ugh, those parking spots, somebody in the other meeting commented about maneuverability, maneuverability on Pasadena Court? Those cars are going to have to back out, go down Pasadena Court, turn around. It's already a very tight, very limited access lane. Come back up out, go down Casador, one way, one way. The guests aren't going to understand how the roads work. Parking is a big issue and needs to be revisited. And I, again, state my concern for a continuance on this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Amanda, followed by Kathy Ward, and then Nancy Sterling.
Oh, sorry.
Amanda, go ahead. Yeah, welcome. That's okay. Just trying to keep things moving.
Sorry.
All right.
Good evening, commissioners. You know, as a San Clemente resident of over 50 or, 50 years, it's really important to preserve historic buildings. You know, with speaking about the Habad Center, you know, they had to have CEQA, and why doesn't this have to have it? I, I think we need CEQA, we need an environmental impact report, and we need a full geotechnical report. When I look at this, it was only a, a page and a half, and that's not really appropriate. As the reports, as the report, staff report says, slope stability is not typically a matter for review by the planning commission. The poor condition of the retaining walls, and the applicant provided preliminary geotechnical report. There's only one, a page and a half. According to this one and a half pages, EGA consultants mentions nearby landslides that occurred at Casa Romantica Cultural Center and Cypress Shores. However, it does not mention that there was one landslide at the Casa Romantica, followed by more movement, so that's two. Plus, it doesn't mention anything regarding the two Buena Vista landslides, one in March of 2023, and then one in January of 2024, which took out the, the Miriposa Bridge. And I, I want to correct Mr. Holloway in that the city of San Clemente only fixed Casa Romantica in an amount of $8 million, and they did not, because it's, it was, it's property owned by the city, they did not repair Buena Vista landslides because that would be the use of public funds. The, let's see. Also, I'm concerned that it doesn't mention the capastrona formation that are typically considered corrosive based on the Caltrans Corrosion Guidelines of 2021. At the Design Review Committee meeting, the Driftwood Bluff condominiums already had slant slippage, and the, I'm so, I'm concerned that this would be, oh, I'm sorry, going back to the report, the page and a half, that it was triggered by water, but there's no mention of capastrona land formation, and that the, in that there was layers of clay and sand and groundwater that caused slippage. I think it's important to have a full geotechnical study done and not one page and a half, and I'm concerned about the destabilization of the surrounding areas such as Driftwood Bluffs and condominiums. There are concerns that this would potentially result of the project causing landslides, lateral spreading, subsidence, liquefaction, or collapse. I definitely do not support this. I feel that we need a continuation because we need CEQA, EIR, and also a parking study as well, because it is so difficult turning around at Pasadena Court. Even with the trashcans there, it's a trashcan truck, it's really difficult to, to turn around. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Kathy Ward, followed by Nancy Sterling, and then Greg Sterling.
Planning Commission, this is the first opportunity for the public to see the full application of this development. As such, this is a prominent resource for our city, and the development is adjacent to properties that are also very significant. It is very important to make sure this development is not injurious to the surrounding areas. While it is not typical for the planning commission to take up geotechnical tech issues at this time, the high profile of this project should indicate to you that it is necessary to require a full geotechnical report before making a finding that this development can be constructed without harm to the surrounding properties, especially those that are on a coastal bluff. As a former planning commissioner and city council member, I could not make the finding that this development is not injurious to the surrounding properties without this report. Secondly, I do not support the five parking spaces on Pasadena Court when I know this will not work with the residential area, and it will have significant impacts that could be further mitigated than what we see already. More effort needs to be done to separate the negative impacts of the commercial use with the residential uses of the streetscape for Pasadena Court and Casador Lane. There is a way to have both, both uses, turning this property into commercial. There is a partial historic wall that is a secondary character-defining feature. It sits on Pasadena Court. I think that wall, if the parking is removed, I think that wall should be extended fully across the residential side of the lot, past the front of the house and connect to the slope or the sitting area feature. I think it all can be worked out with the sidewalk area and access. This wall only beautifies the historic structure, and it does need to be beautified from Pasadena. It, it does not look very well at all, and then not good. But it supports the historic homes behind it, and the possibility that maybe we could still have a historic district on Pasadena Court. I'm not ready to give that, that goal up yet of the city. I believe that, I believe defining the separate uses with this wall and deleting the parking would have the neighborhood support, maybe, and it would be the only way to make this, these uses compatible. A gate should be maintained at the top there to where the general public can't go down into the, where the actual motel uses are. But the gate needs to, to be locked and, and only accessed outside unless paramedics, medical, police need to get in, they have a key to get in a gate like that. The five parking spaces will have to be made up with parking waivers or some combination adjustments in development or seating. I'm looking at the center of this, below this historic house, and it's a spa. I'm not aware that the spa is, is a permitted use or even a conditionally permitted use. That area below there could be made to have the second level moved from those extra two structures down around that to where they all have access to the, the lower part, and they kind of surround the fountain. I think that would be better. I, we're trying to make room for a spa and do all these things when we're adding two stories to something that I think would be better to be bungalows situated around the bottom there. And I, I would like you to consider that, and the applicant to consider that. I fully understand the parking structure and the geotechnical and all that, that it's going to stabilize it, but I think more around it on the top and underneath the house would actually make the area better. I also think that wall that we're talking about and removing the parking should be moved to Victoria in the commercial zone only. You're taking the effort to move the address and all the uses and entrances there. The parking needs to be down there, too. If it has to be waivers, has to be some adjustment to something, I think it's a better project, and I think it's a better visitor serving. But more effort needs to be done to separate the negative impacts of the commercial and residential uses. So I would ask you to continue this. It's the first time that the public's been able to see it, and now that, that we have, you hear the comments about the spa and, and trying to cram all these uses in there. Maybe the units are more important. They should decide that. And, and the restaurant, what are we getting, a restaurant or a preparation area? I don't really know what it is. Is it really visitor-serving for people to go up there and there's a food preparation? I don't know what that is. I think you should find out before you ever give entitlements for restaurants, because those are entitled uses, I, I believe, CUP, they're discretionary. So please, this is the first blush at it. I think we're close, but I think you really need to separate. I fully understand them trying to park all on-site, but the, the impacts to Casador, the two stories of, of those two separate units, I think they could be made better if it was brought down and moved the parking and separate the uses. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Nancy Sterling, followed by Greg Sterling, followed by Dorothy Prohaska.
Previously, I've sent two different comments in writing, and I hope that you have read those, because those were very detailed about my opinions on this project as far as parking and changing the address, which I appreciate you put the address down to Victoria. So I'm going to look at just one little part of it. For most of us, when we buy a home, we see it, we buy it, maybe make some improvements with permits, of course. We live in it, it's a home, and we're part of a neighborhood. After reading the staff report, it became extremely apparent that the purchase of 402 Pasadena was really seen not as a home, but as a way to make money. They even had an economic viability study done. That study said a hotel and a restaurant need to be high-end to be feasible. The hotel needed amenities, spa, pool, meeting room, restaurant. The room rates needed to be high to be feasible. The rating that they would get in the certain season, were we going to pay for it in the fall, was, what the rate's going to be in the winter and summer? Enough money. Everything was about making money. So if that's the goal, what will this motivate to affect other decisions for this property? What are other ways are they going to need to make money? Are they going to ran out the site for events, weddings, speakers, concerts, weekly concerts? Weekly concerts? Nightly concerts? How loud will these be? What will the occupancy be? Is special use permit needed? Would the public have any say in that? The issue of noise in the neighborhood needs to be recognized and addressed specifically and proactively. The guidelines need to be established, and the general plan policy on neighborhood compatibility requires it. I implore you to follow that compatibility report. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Greg Sterling.
Thank you, Commissioners. I submitted to David a email to you about my primary concern there is the infrastructure issue on Pasadena Court because it's a one-way street pulls into a cul-de-sac with supposedly no parking. But the reality is people always park there illegally. And the reality is the, the street is too narrow for emergency vehicles to enter in the case of a emergency situation. And we have, as John Boland mentioned, I think 21 families there. And you need, and you have a canyon with a risk of fire. You need to get fire trucks in there. You have to get police in there, and you have to get ambulances in there in the event of emergency. And right now, the infrastructure's just not set up for that. So it just seems to me that that street is too narrow for the added activity that this particular project would bring. So I would think that the commission needs to look at with regards to what the fire department thinks and the police department thinks about this as it relates to serving the needs of the safety of the people there. And the reality, I know you guys mentioned, several of you mentioned that you have been at the property multiple times. It's just very common to see people parking illegally, and you've got just one narrow car length width to get through, and certainly a fire truck, an ambulance truck could never get through. So that's my concern, and that's been an ongoing concern, especially in the weekends during the summertime when there's high beach traffic. We get also beachcomber traffic. We, you know, residents come through there. We have, you know, the people who go down to Victoria park there illegally, and also the employees on Victoria park there illegally. So that, the concern for safety is my concern for my family and those families that live in that cul-de-sac. So I hope you'll look at that, at that issue.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Dorothy Prohaska, followed by Mike Palcovic, followed by Gerald Koger.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dorothy Prohaska. I've lived on Casador Lane for many, many, many years. And I thought I would bring these examples just to illustrate the vision for the community for this particular property. This is a San Clemente journal. Thank you, Don Kindred. I hope you don't mind me copying it. But there it is, and it's beautiful, and it's been there forever. In addition, the wall that is under discussion is right here, and that is a public gathering place. It has been so for years and years and years. I think that we get ourselves into difficulty when we start mixing up, here's another one, when we start mixing up commercial property and residential property. The addition of the parking places off of Casador, I think, presents a genuine hazard. And as it was pointed out earlier, I think Kathy pointed it out, that if, that if this could be incorporated and the parking structures moved to the lower level and lower the height of the proposed project, I think we have a wonderful opportunity here. I don't want to say no. I want to see it modified. I've lived on that street since 1980. And, you know, poor Melanie Robison was there when I moved in. And she would like something like this to be included in the use for her property. And she worried a great deal. In addition, when you talk about the designated view corridor on Victoria, nobody goes into the beachcomber area to see it. Everybody comes up here. And I think it's worth preserving and incorporating into this project. Pasadena Court and Casador are not commercial. Let's continue to separate the uses and turn the project so it is on Victoria and it remains on Victoria. I totally believe in repurposing and reusing, and I think this property is ripe for it. But to, let's not make it quite so complicated. Let's give it a little more public access. Let's make it a little more reasonable for both uses, for the commercial and for the residential. And everything that's been said about traffic and parking and illegal use is all true. I used to get my push broom out on Monday morning and sweep the street up after all the visitors came. And I don't begrudge the visitors at all because it's a, it's a wonderful place to live, and we're privileged to be there. But I also believe in sharing to a great degree. And I'm also happy, I would be more than willing to volunteer to help people, to help the project in any way that I possibly can, being part of a committee or continuing with refining. Because I think refining is definitely in order. I think we have enormous potential and enormous possibility here, and I don't want to see it lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, there. Thank you. I'll be very quick. Everything I was going to talk about's been covered. I agree with mostly everything that's been said, particularly John, Melissa, Kathy, and others. And I, I will save you guys some time. Thank you. Oh, my wife and I live directly across the street from the project. So we're, we're right there. And everything they're saying about that particular area, the street and the parking, those are huge issues. They need to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and your comments. Jerry Koger, followed by Kristy McBride-Hart, and then Larry Culbertson. Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
Please reset the timer, please.
I'm presenting tonight as president of Driftwood Bluffs. That's the 15-unit condo complex that is adjacent to the proposed project. My comments, I am humbled by the prior speakers. They have touched on basically every issue that we had been concerned about. Would like to reemphasize the concern of our 15 homeowners with the safety on Pasadena Court. Personally, three weeks ago, we had to have the paramedics out for my wife. They had one hell of a time at 4:00 in the morning. I cannot imagine what would happen with the additional five spots as proposed, the additional traffic, and just the general congestion. Again, you know, my, the prior speakers have covered every issue that I have talked about. All of you have said you have been on the project. You have seen the congestion. You understand Casador. You understand Pasadena Court. You understand the complexity. Do thank you for all of your efforts and look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Kristy McBride-Hart.
Kristy McBride-Hart, San Clemente resident since 1977. I'm a current resident of Driftwood Bluff. My concern is the land under my home as they gut the lot next to me like a pumpkin. They state that it will increase stability with concrete and steel. But what about before the concrete and steel is put in? That land is already moving. I ask for a continuance until a thorough geological study has been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Larry Culbertson, followed by Gerald Laidlaw, followed by Leanne.
That'll teach me to put my card in first. Jonathan, could you put up that slide? And please, reset the timer. All right, I'll start. The historical, my name is Larry Culbertson, representing the Historical Society. The Historical Society is opposed to this project for the same reason that we opposed a similar project on this site back in 2005. It would obliterate one of the last remaining estate gardens in San Clemente. We do not believe that the Secretary of Interior Standards support destruction of such an important historic resource. The Secretary's Standard Number Nine states, quote, "Related new construction should not destroy historic materials, features, or spatial relationships that characterize the property," unquote. This is precisely what that project would do. If you remove the soil from an historic garden and replace it with concrete, isn't that destruction of historic material? If you put buildings where plants were, isn't that destroying the spatial relationships that characterize the property? CPA claimed, or GPA claims that, quote, "The project would involve the demolition of non-character-defining landscape and hardscape improvements of the terrace garden, including the terrace landscaping." No. The terrace landscaping is a significant character-defining feature of the property. The historic integrity of the property lies in the integral relationship between the house and the garden. The Chateau Architecture Report of 2002 that I included in my letter to you is very emphatic that the 1930 South Garden is a contributing feature of Vista de las Olas, and its demolition would be a significant impact on the historic integrity of the property. There was another report done in 2002 that you did not get a copy of. That was the Garbini and Garbini Landscape Architects. They produced a 44-page landscape history, history and analysis report that methodically listed every plant, wall, column, stairs, fence, and gate on the property with photographs. This should have been consultant with an eye toward replacing missing materials. That would have been rehabilitation. In my letter to you, I argue that the Vista de las Olas should be on the National Register of Historic Places, and that the project would harm the historic integrity of the property in a way that would preclude it from qualifying for the register. You might ask GPA if this project qualifies for the listing and if the proposed project would help or hinder that effort. You certainly don't want to get to be the deciding body whose vote precludes Vista de las Olas from a shot at the National Register. The Secretary of Interior Standard 10 states that the additions will be made such that if removed, the form and integrity of the historic property would be unimpaired. Could you have GPA explain how all of that concrete and steel could be removed and the historic garden put back together? With respect to the environmental review, the staff report states that the project meets the Secretary of Interior Standards and is therefore exempt. In fact, there's a high likelihood that the project would have a significant impact on the historic integrity of Vista de las Olas. So please, require a full environmental impact report. Thank you. That picture I put up is just a historic picture. I don't know what year it's from, but that's what we need to see, not all that concrete and steel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Leanne, followed by Jill Amaretto, followed by Scott Potter.
Hi. I agree with, I don't have much to say, so I'll make it quick because I agree with everything that's already been said. But I do just want to add one thing. So the applicant used to live on Caide de los Alamos, which is, I live on that street as well. And I also have a house in, around Casador. But you spoke, you spoke earlier about being courteous to your neighbors and at the Shabbat Center, and they are very courteous. I also happen to have a house in that neighborhood. And you never hear a peep out of them. They're very, I walk by and see the rabbi, very courteous. This gentleman was not courteous. He routinely had loud parties that went throughout the night. The sheriffs were out there on many occasions. And I'm sure if you wanted to verify that, you could with the sheriff's department because they, they were loud parties that would sometimes go until 4:00 in the morning. So I think, who's to say that the same thing won't happen in this neighborhood? And there are a lot of neighbors in that neighborhood to, to consider for loud parties and noise after hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Amaretto, followed by Scott Potter. There we go. Thank you for pointing that out.
My name is Jill Amaretto. I live directly across from this proposed project. And over the past two years, I have made it clear that I am against this hotel project adjacent to our neighbor, in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is quiet and a unique and wonderful ambiance. We have a unique aesthetic and a sense of place. At the end of Casador Lane and Pasadena Court, there's a wonderful vista overlooking the historic pier and the historic gardens belonging to the Cliff House, which is where this project is proposed. Now, it's proposed for five parking spots, which you could not see the gardens if you did that. So where are you going to see the gardens from? Public view, you have to go on the property to see that. So for 100 years, tourists and locals go to, gather at this vista area to enjoy the views and sunsets. Conversion of this property to a hotel adjacent to our neighborhood will disrupt the continuity and historical significance of the neighborhood. And in many ways, it will, well, never mind. In this, in the report being presented tonight, it says, I don't think I heard it, but I read it. "The proposed development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare are materially injurious to properties and improvements in this vicinity," end of quote. Based on what? I would like an environmental impact report before this project gets voted on. How can you say it won't impact us? Let me give you examples of detrimental impact. Loss of character and charm, increased noise and traffic, disrupting peace and tranquility, strained infrastructure, parking, et cetera, decreased property values. Commercialization of a property, it does impact the values. Let me give you a quote. "The conversion of a historic property to a commercial property can disrupt the visual continuity of an area." That's from a historic journal. I feel it's extremely important that we get that impact report before this proceeds. In addition, Casador Lane and Pasadena Court are streets behind the project. These are residential streets, not commercial streets. Victoria is the street designated for this project. The project calls for five off-street parking spots on Pasadena Court. Again, it's a residential street. Once you add parking up there, it becomes part of the commercial project. These should be down on Victoria. The five spots also interfere with a 100-year-old vista area and require historic wall to be removed. The wall actually can be extended, like Kathy mentioned, so that it could be more aesthetically pleasing. This project is big. If it needs those five spots, make it smaller so you don't have those five spots to deal with. I have nine seconds left. So I had historical requirements to go through, and I had a lot of time that I had to spend on this, and this project went through, and mine was just a little house across the street. And this house, you're not very, you weren't very forgiving for me, but you seem to be pretty, or somebody seems to be pretty forgiving for that project. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comments tonight. Scott Potter, followed by Alexander Alasine, and then Catherine Hall.
All right, thank you. I'm Scott Potter. First of all, I'd like to say the renderings and the presentation, it's very pretty, looks nice. And my family has a history of undergoing development projects. We are business owners, we're developers, we're very pro-growth, we're pro-development, given that it's the right use and the right location. And unfortunately, I'm here to actually protest the project because we feel like it is a little big of a project for the location it's in. We have, we built and still own a condo on Casador. We've been there for 40 years, and I lived there for quite a few years. I'm a father of two. I raised my kids there. We learned to ride their bikes down on Pasadena Court. And my key issue right there is safety has been, it's been brought up. Casador is a very narrow, one-way street. It's often crowded on both sides with parked vehicles. And if you guys don't live there, you guys walked there before, you'll often see people turning off Victoria illegally, going down the wrong way. Often had to say, hey, turn around, you're going the wrong way. You build more stuff there, more people are going to make that happen. They also turn left down Pasadena Court, thinking they can get to the beach or the pier that way as well. And usually when they see how tight that cul-de-sac is, they whip around and fly right out of there. Again, you build a big development, that's going to happen more regularly. The last time it was a commercial-use building was the rehab center, and daily there'd be delivery vans, drop-off vans, that would use Pasadena Court as their turnaround, and again, would whip through there very quickly. That leads right into the parking issue, which everyone's already said. It's a constant issue. If you have guests over, they usually have to park blocks away to make it to your house, let alone if you have an extra car to park in your own place. It's very tough to park there. They do mention a new garage and 17 parking spots, five of which are on Pasadena Court. That horse has been beat pretty dead, but it would be tough for those cars to get in and out of Pasadena Court. But where will the deliveries be made? If Casador can't handle delivery traffic, so it's probably going to be on Victoria, you pull up a Cisco truck to do food services and drop that off, you're going to be parking a large delivery truck on Victoria on a blind turn, probably blocking traffic. That needs to be considered. Noise, that cul-de-sac, it's a natural amphitheater. It echoes through there. You do hear the beautiful waves and the kids and all that good stuff, too, but you also hear other stuff. No joke, Ohano Festival. I heard Mumford &amp; Sons like I was still at Doheny Beach. It was coming right through there. So we are going to hear the restaurant, we are going to hear the pool, we are going to hear any amplified music or activity that's going down there. So we do need to consider concerts, weddings, even that spa area on that rendering that looked like it was right there on Pasadena Court. Late night, people having cocktails by the spa, that's going to echo right through Pasadena Court. Again, we are not pro-growth, not against growth, we're just for smart growth, and maybe this project as it stands right now is just a little too big for what should be going there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Alexander Alasine.
Thank you for taking your time for us. I should mention that I'm talking about an existing issue that will be aggravated even more. I'm 91 years old, and I, twice every week, I get sent for therapy at the hospital at Laguna de Gal. They send a vehicle to pick me up and also to take me home. The issue is, it's an age-well vehicle. The age-well vehicles need to be wider than the average vehicle. And since I live at 406 Pasadena Court, those vehicles have to try to come down Casador onto Pasadena Court. And because they take care of so many aged people in that area of the 21 people, I may be the oldest, but the average age is probably 85, so they're pretty close. And that hospital and those vehicles are a big issue. There is another problem that makes the issue even greater. That is, the curbs on Pasadena Court and in front of 402 Pasadena Court are higher than the average curb by about four inches. So people who park at 402 Pasadena Court and all the other people, they cannot open their car door, so they have to park further away, further out. So the street for these age-well vehicles is so narrow that they can't get through. If you have a vehicle and you attempt to park it on Pasadena Court or on Casador, where they're going to build this building, you can't get through there because these cars park, you know, so far away from the curb, and they have to park that far away from the curb because of a situation that, it's been like that for a long time. I suggest that in your plan, try to include bringing the curbs down if it doesn't destroy the water flow. Suggest that there is something done to make this available to other senior citizens, not just myself. There are other people who need this transportation and will need it in the future. I've talked too long now, and I'm repeating myself. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments. Catherine Hall, followed by Christine Lambert, followed by Susie Klickstein.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hall, and I live in San Clemente, but up the hill. I enjoy visiting this area, and I'm one of those people that visits and searches and circles looking for parking. And what I heard over and over is that there are 17 places for parking at this facility proposed. And what was said in the presentation is that 12 of those are allocated for the motel, and five of them are allocated for the restaurant, whatever the restaurant may be. So I started just making a few notes after I heard that, and I came up with, we need a cook, whether they're just prepping food or cooking food, you need a cook, you need waitstaff, you need spa staff, you need repair maintenance people, you need a front desk person, you need gardeners, pool maintenance people, housekeeping people. Where the heck are they parking? I can count at least 10 people that you need on that property, if not all day, at least part of every day. Then you've got delivery trucks. This property is way too overdeveloped for the parking they're making available. There is no parking for all of that support staff that I just mentioned. And I just did that sitting in the back of the room. There's probably more that I've forgotten. So I ask that you carefully consider parking. I listened to your questions of the Shabbat Center, and you were very concerned about them having 17 spaces, which is the same as is proposed here. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you for your comments. Christine Lambert, followed by Susie Klickstein, followed by Wayne Eggleston. And if anyone else wants to be heard tonight, please feel free to grab a blue card and bring it on up, and I'll call your name.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where do I find a blue card?
In the back.
All right. Got a blue card, thank you.
Okay, Christine.
Okay, great. I'm Christine Lambert. I'm an architect here in town. I also write articles for three of our local magazines about the historic properties in town. I have written about this house, I've written about the houses across the street. But I came here tonight to ask to preserve the garden, because to me, that's the most important part of this whole project, is that glorious garden that Larry showed us a photograph of. But I became aware, sitting here, of the privacy issue on Casador and Pasadena Court. I've been, spent much time on that street because of the articles I've written. I have friends that live on that street, and I realized that the separation of privacy and public space is much more important than I had thought of. So I think that's something that should be considered. Catherine Ward's comment about extending the wall, and I've heard people say not, no parking there, make that more of a private area and turn the public space towards Victoria. And I agree that it's important for people to preserve this property, and we need to find some sort of historic reuse for it. I think it's important that the public should be able to access it in some way. So I think there's a lot of good in the project that's been proposed. I just think it might be a little too ambitious. Maybe it needs to be toned down. So that's, that's just my opinion. So thank you.
No, thank you. Susie Klickstein, and then Wayne Eggleston, and then anyone else. But bring up your card, please, so I can call your name. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Susie Klickstein, and I'm with the Historical Society, and I honestly can't think of anything I could add to what I've heard, especially the Bolins and Mr. Colbitson and Christine. And I really agree with, the parking down there is already a nightmare. And there's just, you know, there's not enough right now, let alone putting in, you know, extra parking for the hotel and restaurant. So that's my two cents, anyway. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Wayne?
Wayne, haven't put up that other question.
Followed by Sarah Cablo, and then Tiffany Northway.
Could you reset the time?
Absolutely. Thank you. For a former mayor, we can do that.
Thank you. And don't forget to, you skipped over Jerry Laidlaw, who owns the Beachcomber, by the way, so.
I believe I called his name, but let me, let me pull his card back out. I appreciate you bringing that to my attention, Wayne.
Okay, thank, thank you. When I was first elected to city council in the last century, the city manager, Mike Parness, took me aside and said, "The most important thing with regard to deciding anything in San Clemente is process. If you don't have good process, you don't have a good outcome." And there's, the process here has been very problematic. This is a very high-profile development. It would be nice to have a hotel in the Pier Bowl area, and this development certainly has some good merits. But, and the decision you make tonight has serious consequences for adjacent properties. It's a very important decision that you're going to be making this evening. There are, there are three areas of really concern. Number one, this property has code violations currently. There have been two patios that have been built recently without, I believe, permits or without Coastal Commission review. And also, there's water drainage coming out of the wall into a public sidewalk, which in fact is a, is a slip hazard for the city. That's very serious. Number two, the land use plan, the LUP or Local Coastal Plan, the LCP, has not been approved by the Coastal Commission yet. Yet this project seems to be going forward without that approval, and we need to know the date of that. That's very important, that we know the date of that. So the Coastal Commission may not even approve various aspects of the, of the, of the LUP or the LCP. The findings, number, number three, the findings that you have, it says here, "The proposed development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to the properties and improvements in the vicinity." You can't make that finding. You have a page and a half geotech report. You need a lot more. The, I know that the planning commission typically does not get involved with these things, but this is not a typical development. You can't make that finding without some basic information on geotech and the soils and the drainage. A peer review needs to be made. I'm asking for a continuance so that more thorough studies can be made for the soils and the groundwater. The secret, there's, there's, there's not a secret checklist in your report. When I was on the city council, there was always a secret checklist. And in fact, there are many different things in the checklist with regard to soils that would, that would, that would require an EIR. There are landslides in the area. We really need a further study on these issues, to say the least. And I do ask about what, how's the garage is going to be, there's no door in the garage at this point, it's going to be, that's a safety issue and a homeless issue. And also, construction traffic cannot come down Elena Lane, Casador Lane, or Pasadena Court. That all has to be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah Cablo, followed by Tiffany Northway, and then Gerald Laidlaw.
Okay, you called my name earlier, but I'll gladly.
No, no, go ahead.
What did I, who are you? I'm sorry.
I'm Gerald Laidlaw.
Yeah.
I was.
Come on up, you're fine. I'll take you now.
I was supposed to leave after the lady from the.
Yes, I did call your name, and I think I got things out of order.
And then you called somebody else, and I thought, well.
Come on up, no. We'll take you now. Thank you so much.
Well, a lot has been said. Those of you. Hi. That's what you get for being six, seven. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit emotional. My father purchased the Beachcomber property in 1972, and it's been an amazing run. And we want to continue, we want to be a part of the San Clemente experience. Those of you who've been familiar with the property have seen, we've put in tremendous improvements, lots of money spent, and we're trying to make it the best it can possibly be. There's been all kinds of things mentioned tonight. I had an agenda, but in light of all the comments that have been brought up tonight, I think you get the picture on most of them. I did one thing that hasn't been brought up. I did get a soils engineer analysis, and this property, this coastline, was pointed out by my soils engineer. This, this used to be seashore. And the seashore ground, or whatever you want to call it, is comprised of two elements, basically, slip, silt, stones, okay, silt, stone, and claystone bedrock. And that was part of the ocean floor, so to speak, and over thousands of years, it has risen, which land does. Unfortunately, that isn't the best and the most stable ground to build a development such as this on. And I'm not trying to take away from the engineering or whatever that's going into this project. I'm sure that has to be considered. But as one lady pointed out, she, she had a good analogy, she said, "When they dig this out and go down the 80-plus feet and try to do the caissons, and whatever it is to support this giant, huge, massive hole in the ground, who knows what's going to be found? And will the provisions be made, or will the funds be there to make it as safe as people would want it to be?" It's kind of opening up Pandora's Box, so to speak. I'm concerned about my property, which is down the hill, and what's going on. I'm not going to get into the noise, the pool parties, the weddings, all that. You've heard that from everybody else. But from a structural standpoint, I seem to have no assurances of the safety of my property and the slippage and the damage that could occur with an excavation of this type. I don't know if people understand how deep the hole's going to be and putting in caissons, and then they, I don't know if you know this also, but there was a report in 2002 about underground water coming right down Victoria that's underground, and it kind of turns. Is that going to be diverted away from the Pasadena project? If it is diverted, is it going to be diverted into my property? Is it going to be diverted into the city sewer system? And is the city prepared to take care of that? There's a lot of, lot of questions that just haven't been answered. I know everybody's asked for an EIR and geological report, further studies for what could happen here. Obviously, something needs to be done with the, with the property in its decaying state and that type of thing, but a continuance to look at all of the issues, I think, is in order, as many of the people here would agree with me, is something that needs to be looked into. And I thank you for your time, and I thank the citizens of San Clemente for being here and voicing their opinions about this, this area and what can be done with it to best serve and protect, you know, the people of San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight and your business in San Clemente. Sarah? And then we'll have Tiffany Northway.
Hi, I'm Sarah. My daughter was very excited to be here because I actually work for the applicant, so she was really excited to see all of my coworkers here. I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on the applicant, and he owns and operates another business in San Clemente. It's on Caide Negocio. We employ almost 50 people, some remote, but a lot here in San Clemente. It's very successful, and he's done so much to give back to the community. He employs people in San Clemente. I live in Dana. I'm actually working on my own property with Tony, the architect. He is fantastic. His renderings are amazing. I know that he's spent so much time in this project, and the only other point I wanted to add is that he's not proposing knocking down the project. He's not building some mod squad property. It's historic, it's consistent with the design, it's going to look beautiful, and it flows with the city. It's not modern, you know? So I think that that is just something to consider. I don't live on the street, I can't add anything about parking or any of that, but I just wanted to give a different perspective of somebody who lives and works in San Clemente for somebody who is putting money back into the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you to your daughter for hanging. Thank you to your daughter for hanging in there. Tiffany Northway, followed by Joelle Dunwald, and then Peter Rock.
My name's Tiffany...
Bring it up.
My name's Tiffany Northway. I am HR Director for the applicant. I have lived in San Clemente for 51 years. My grandmother lived in San Clemente for 70. Her plaque's at the San Clemente Municipal Golf Course, and my whole entire childhood was at the pier. All my memories are there. And I am so for this project because I know who wants to do it, and it's somebody that's very loyal, very devoted to his family. He comes from a family of eight, and he believes in integrity. And I really believe there can be a compromise here for the neighbors so that works for everyone. But I do know, I grew up at the pier. I took my children to the pier, and I hope to bring my grandchildren to the pier. And I sure would like to look at that property. I think it'd be so cool and so great for the community. So I hope you guys can listen and compromise on this because I do think it's going to bring a lot of joy to the community. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joelle Dunwald, followed by Peter Rock, and then we have Rochelle Brandon.
Hi. I guess I would be called the applicant as well, but mostly my husband's been driving this, and I'm primarily quiet. But I did need to stand up tonight. I respect the neighbors for coming forward and expressing their concerns. I consider us to be very neighborly. The gathering spot that they're referring to of the historic wall is right outside of my window. And everybody makes it sound like it's so idyllic. But in today's world, it really isn't. I have my kids out there. There's been skateboarders on top of that historic wall I've had to kick out. There's been beer cans. There's been people smoking weed. You know, for the person who owns the home, pays the taxes, who takes care of the home, who picks up the empty beer bottles, you know, we also have a say in that. So I just wanted to make that clear because that can be a nuisance as well. In terms of the gardens, again, I know you referenced the pictures from a while back. When we moved in, the gardens did not look like that. I spent probably five days a week out there, a few hours, watering things, cleaning up things. I was going to bring it tonight, but I didn't. But if anyone wants to see it, I have a picture of it. I probably have picked up 1,000 pieces of broken historic tile, beautiful, hand-painted historic tile. So my question is, where was everyone before, before this mess happened? Because I'm out there picking it up, and I'm taking every rock. And I think what he was referencing earlier is, I put the rocks together in a little flat area. It's not a patio. So I could sit down for the summer. And because we own the house, so we can enjoy it, have a table, have chairs, have people over. I put those rocks there. We're not throwing those rocks away. We're not getting rid of them. My daughter's making a mural out of the historic tile because she's an artist. We care. If we didn't care, we wouldn't have spent money on doing a geological already. We wouldn't listen to what the concerns are. I'm very neighborly. And to be honest with you, my neighbors that are here tonight, the only person who has spent time talking to me is Jerry, where we really get to know each other. After the last meeting, I'd say we have a nice relationship. I'd like to continue that. In terms of, I think it was Leanne that spoke about us being, you know, loud. I did have teenagers when I lived on Alamos, and a couple of them had a party. I don't know who doesn't have teenagers who have those things. And yes, my husband likes to listen to loud music occasionally. But we care about the community. As Sarah and Tiffany said, we've been business owners here for 25 years. We've employed people. We've given back to the community. We've paid taxes. And in addition to that, I guess I want to say it's indicative as well. If you look behind us, a lot of our employees are here. And my children, people that live with my children. We're friendly. We want to hear from people. And so really, that's all I wanted to add. You know, my husband has big dreams, and one of them was our company that we established 25 years ago. I left a job as an account supervisor in advertising to help start the business. We've been in business now for almost 30 years. So, you know, we're not fly-by-night. We're solid people, and we care about the community. We want to have our grandchildren here. We want to share with the community. One comment that I've consistently heard from people is, "It's great you're listening, and it's great you want to offer this to others." Because really, we do. We could stay there. We could do the gardens. We could keep the view to ourselves. But my husband's vision was bigger. So I guess I had to get up tonight because I needed to speak out on his behalf. So thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you so much for your comments tonight. Peter Rock, followed by Rochelle Brandon, and then our final speaker, unless I get another card, is Spencer Brokaw. Peter, welcome.
Yes. My name is Peter Rock, and I live in San Clemente. And I'd like to talk about this project. I must admit that on paper, it looks like a beautiful project. The rendering showed what is to happen, and it really looks good. But assuming that the project, let's go a little step further. Assuming the project is approved and it is going to be built. By the way, I do back up all the comments that were made. I don't need to go over again the problems of engineering, the noise, what is happening with the parking, and so forth. But let's assume that it is approved, and now we are going into construction. Consider all the heavy equipment that will be coming in, tractors, diggers, coring equipment, and so forth. And all of these things are going to be brought in by bed trucks. As you probably have noticed, a lot of deliveries in San Clemente are made by 18-wheelers. And 18-wheelers and bobcats, which are a little bit short of a truck, generally try to park by the curb, but often, they end up parking in the middle of the street because there is no parking. So assuming the project goes through, and it is beautiful and so forth, but how do we address all the issues that come along with it? Now, the other thing is this. Engineering is very capable nowadays of building the project, putting in caissons, pouring concrete, et cetera, et cetera. We don't need to go into that. But what happens if damage is caused to properties which hang on a property across the street? What happens if there is slippage? What if there's cracking? Who is responsible for the repairs? That property on the curb is very close to the cliff, which is, I presume, about 50 feet high. And somebody pointed out what type of soil it is. Okay, now, during the construction, we have a problem. Or after the construction, a year down the road, something happens to some of these properties that are adjacent. They develop cracks. They develop slippage. Now, it is our responsibility to hire a geologist, to go out and do some digging, investigation, engineering, getting permits, money spent to find out the cause of it and who pays for that. So these are the things that you probably need to consider. Like I said, the project looks beautiful on paper, but in reality, when it is in process, you need to consider the effects of the project. I realize San Clemente would like to have more public usage, which is a good idea, to have more public usage. I am all for that. But at the same time, considering the location of the property, it's a very sensitive location, which needs a careful study. It was pointed out that the Haddad project took so many years to be approved, and probably this one needs a little further study. So it's in your capacity, and it's in your ball court, to consider the issues that were presented to you at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Rochelle, followed by Spencer Brokaw, and then our final is Allison Schumacher, unless someone else brings up the card. Rochelle, thank you.
Hello. So the Pier Bowl is a vibrant hub of social life for the city of San Clemente. And it's my belief and the beliefs of many, many, many friends that this project is going to contribute to that culture while preserving that beautiful Ole Hansen architecture that everybody in the city just loves. I can't speak to many of the things that I've talked about tonight, but what I can address are the Dunwolds personally. These are incredibly loving and loyal people. They're generous. They're integrous. They're passionate about creating something beautiful for the city. And to hear people speak about them negatively who don't know them and who haven't taken the time to meet them and speak with them is just real disconcerting as a person, as a 21-year member of the community. I think it's important that all of us remember this development, this time in our life and for the city, this point in time in the life of the city when we're seeing lots of landslides and what have you, to have a family who's willing to devote time, effort, and money to build something beautiful that everybody that wants to come to the city can enjoy is really important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Spencer, followed by Allison Schumacher.
Thank you, council, for hearing my voice. I'd just like to say, I appreciate you guys. One of the first topics that I heard was that there's not enough parking. I've lived in San Clemente enough to realize there's already no fucking parking, no parking. My bad. Excuse me.
You could watch the language. We appreciate it.
I really apologize. There's no parking. I drive around for 15 minutes to try and find a parking spot, and I live in a place that has three parking spots, so... One, this, one, yeah. The people who are building this are looking out for the community. They've lived here their whole lives. They want to see a better community. You look at Casa Romantica, and, you know, there's been held-back stipulations on what they can and can't do. And half of it just eroded down the hill. And it's a shame. That's a historic building that we'll never see the original value of that building because they can't preserve it. And I'd just like to say that if you let us preserve specific, amazing, original buildings in this community, we can preserve them and view them forever. And it is a shame to see that. And... I would also like to say that... Sorry, I just pulled up the wrong notes. I apologize. But it's a beautiful historic property, and a beautiful boutique design would allow the public to enjoy this space as it should be for years to come. Nobody wants to hang out at the historic wall. They would rather hang out on the property, preserved and built up to be an amazing, beautiful design. And if we could let that happen, then nobody in this community would disagree with it, that we all get to sit above the pier and look at an amazing, beautiful building. And what else could we want? You're talking about preserving a historic building that, right now, is privately owned, that nobody gets to go to. But build it up in the right way, and we could all go enjoy that. And it would be amazing. And without your guys' consent, it won't be. But it could be. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you guys very much.
All right. Thank you for your comments tonight. Allison Schumacher, and then I've got a last card again. And we'll take as many as people want to speak. Elise Dunwald. So you're Allison.
Yes, thanks for letting me speak. I am a resident of Trafalgar Lane, which is very close to the property. And I have been intrigued with that property for the 25 years that I've lived on Trafalgar and was just thrilled when I found out that the Dunwolds, who are personal friends, had purchased it. And I want to say that the Dunwolds have done impeccable, outstanding renovations and re, well, yes, retotal renovations of their own homes. And they have been unbelievably detailed. I think very good neighbors and concerned about the effects of their renovations on the neighbors. And I can't imagine that they would leave any stone unturned with regard to the geology, just pretty much an all-encompassing, you know, situation in terms of the Pier Bowl area. I think they are very aware of the other businesses in the Pier Bowl, and those other businesses have managed to get delivery trucks in. And perhaps, you know, if they are embraced as a business, community, they can also be advised by the fishermen and all the other businesses that are located in that Pier Bowl area. In terms of the noise issues, I find it a little bit amusing that anyone who chooses to buy a property in the San Clemente Pier Bowl would think that we would be immune to noise. I too can hear concerts. I put up a free little library on my property. And, I mean, it's amazing, the number of people that can come, hundreds of people coming by every week. And I know just simply from living on Trafalgar that security has gotten more difficult. We've had more robberies, car robberies. And I think that a high-end property, it can have drawbacks, but it can also have major advantages to adding security and eyes on the area where we seem lacking on some level. Our area is becoming, across the board, on Del Mar and Avenue of Victoria, the restaurants are becoming way higher-end than they were 25 years ago. We are bringing in people who, you know, we are a desirable venue. We are bringing in people who want higher-end restaurants, obviously. We are bringing in people who want to stay in San Clemente and visit. And we need a larger variety of venues in which to stay. What the Dunwolds are offering is a boutique hotel. 11 rooms do not a party, it can make a party situation, but it is not an ongoing, large-scale, upsetting venue. And though I am very close to, and walk down Casador all the time, I do not think that it will be as disruptive as we're hearing. Living in the Pier Bowl itself is disruptive. We live on narrow, convoluted streets. I don't think that an addition of a relatively small boutique hotel will do anything except add and enhance our neighborhood. So although I understand, and I do not know, you know, the details of some of the complaints...
Allison, I want to thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Elise Dunwald, and then Marley Seaborn.
Hello, I'm Elise Dunwald. I could stand up here a lot tonight and talk about the integrity of the applicant, considering he did raise me. But I could go on for hours about that because I do think very highly of him, and that's been touched on tonight. So I'm not going to go in any more into that. As for those who stood up here tonight and opposed the project and did so with facts and integrity as well, I do respect those opinions very much, and I'm appreciative of that rather than the ones that, you know, maybe went after character a little bit. I wanted to come up here specifically, more so tonight, to speak for the younger generation. I've grown up in San Clemente. I'm 23 years old. I also got a degree in ecology. So I'm more well-known about coastal erosion. I've learned a lot about a lot of these things, and I've seen it play out in San Clemente. For example, Linda Lane is a beach I used to frequent when I was younger. And in the winter months, you can't even walk on it anymore. So what I'm asking the council to think more about is, this is a project that's introducing a way that we can stabilize these areas. We've seen it with Casa Romantica. And we want to preserve these things in the... We've seen it with Casa Romantica, and we want to preserve these things in the charm of San Clemente while also protecting these lands. We want to protect our surrounding communities, we want to protect, protect facilities and other neighborhoods in these ways. And I personally want to be able to come back to San Clemente in 20 years and be able to still see where I grew up. And I think projects like these are proposing that, and that's being undermined, and I think it's just something really important to keep in mind, coming from a little bit of a younger perspective. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Marley Seaborn. This is our final, final blue card we've got.
Hi, I'm Marley. Again, I just kind of wanted to speak on behalf of the younger generation and on behalf of the Dunwolds. First and foremost, I've lived in San Clemente my entire life, and I also want to bring my family back here one day. I grew up going to that wall that people have been talking about and watching the sunset and dreaming about continuing to do that. So I appreciate the Dunwolds for wanting to create an environment where other people can do that as well. And then also just to speak on their character, due to personal reasons, I needed a place to stay, and they opened their home to me, and I appreciate that more than I could ever say, and I know that that's just what they want to do for the rest of the community. And they want to share all, like, the treasure that is San Clemente with other people, and they want to preserve and really help restore this property. And I truly, truly trust that if anyone can take on this project, it's the Dunwolds. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. That's the final speaker, unless there's anyone else. I want to make sure that anyone that wants to speak can. Do we have any other voices that want to be heard tonight? Okay. First, I want to thank everybody for their time tonight and the time to prepare your comments and then bring them here. It's not easy, and it's not something that you do all the time, so the fact that you did it tonight is very much appreciated. We heard you. Now, the next step in this process is, the applicant representative will have 10 minutes to speak to the comments they heard tonight, and then we will, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues so we can have some questions and then some discussion. So I don't know, Jim or Tony, who's going to do it, but I just would like for you guys that if you can stay in the 10 minutes, I'd really appreciate it. This is your response time.
Yeah, I'd especially like our geotech person, I think the two biggest, most, you know, frequently repeated was geotech and traffic service, delivery, neighborhood impact, so we'd like to hit on those, but I'm going to accede the time to our geologist and to Tony to talk through that because we do have a ton of information.
Okay, that'd be great to hear.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is John Eggers. I'm a geologist with EGA Consultants. I've worked in Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Coronel Mar, Great Orange County, and Southern California area for the last 12 years in geology and soils. My intention is to present the geology and soils investigation that we have completed. It's a full study. We call it a preliminary geotechnical report because our, our borings and our sampling was completed before a design was agreed upon. It's, it's something that's done before construction. On July 15th, 2023, I personally took two hand auger borings to 11 feet below grade. On September 14th, 2023, we did a third bucket auger, 24 inches in diameter. I was then lowered in a carriage 51 and a half feet below grade and logged that hole personally. As we, before we had that hole and I got lowered down, we took samples along the way, which gave us a density. We took continuous rings, which are in situ samples, took them to the lab for testing. We were able to visually classify, feel and hold the material that's below the site. Furthermore, we did two cone penetration tests to 30 feet on August 31st, 2023. It is my understanding, I don't know where the geotechnical report is within this process, but it has been completed and it is comprehensive. It's more than just the page and a half. We've also reviewed the 2000 study done by Peter and Associates. That was done in September, September 18th, 2000. I'm, I don't want to spend too much time, but I want to briefly go over the geology under the site. This is a site-specific study. This is for 402 and 404 Pasadena Court. This isn't for San Clemente as a city. Again, this is for our property because our borings were specifically within the property lines. We have artificial fill for the upper three feet approximately. That consists mostly of fine-grained, silty sand and clay. It's medium or low to medium expansive and high plastic. Below that, we have non-marine terrace to approximately seven feet. This was predominantly in the upper portion of the lot towards the intersection of Casador and Pasadena Court. Pardon me if I get the streets wrong, I don't know it cold. The, below that, we have a variation between the marine terrace deposits, marine or non-marine, in which there are some sandy strata that did have a little bit of water, but it's natural groundwater presence. Again, this material is limited to the upper portion of the lot, and with the proposed construction of this basement and caissons, this material will be removed as part of that excavation. From seven to 20 feet in the lower portion of the lot, we have the capistrano formation, it's oxidized. This is marine silt stone and clay stone, as was mentioned. This material is fairly dense. And then at 20 feet and below, we have very high-density silt stone and clay stone, which is the capistrano formation, unoxidized. This material had blow counts upwards of 50 to 60, those blows per foot. There's a 144-pound hammer that is dropped. They count the number of times that they have to drop the hammer to advance this, the sampler 12 inches, and that's what those translate to. Finally, the, the excavation, the maximum retained height is 34 feet. This is engineering that's been done by David Perkis. This is stuff that has actually been calculated, it's not conceptual. And the removals and the retained height is occurred as an industry-standard process where you drill these caissons, you put in steel or I-beams or whatever the design is, and then as you, you pour concrete into the holes and you excavate down five feet at a time while lagging, not to mention while surveys are being done to monitor for movement and any other additional possible distress. This, this design and this study is all site-specific, and I intend to emphasize that because we're not looking at just some blanket brush-stroke report. We were on-site, we were in the ground, and we were there. So I appreciate you guys' time and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this.
Jim, I'm just going to respond to a couple of things, and I'd like Audrey to close it as far as the historical. As far as the, again, project being too large, it's, I mean, that, it's kind of a subjective thing, but I want to remind you that on, on the numbers on the report, our FAR is .59 when it's allowed to 1.5, and our lot coverage is, I think, 69%. So, and the fact that we can get the parking to support the facilities was, that was the whole idea. We're obviously trying to maximize the site, but it, by definition, it's not too large in the sense that we're able to accommodate that. As far as the parking, this is specifically written in the code, and I appreciate you pulling that up, that technically off-street parking, it goes towards the allowable parking. So technically speaking, we have 31 parking spaces available, but we worked hard to make sure that all of the required were on, were off-site. So technically speaking, we are parked, and technically, we have more parking than we're actually required to have. Then the, the comment about the spa, someone seeing a spa, that spa, actually, if you look on the, on the elevations, I think it's A 4.1, that spa is about nine and a half feet lower than the parking lot. Someone would have to literally be standing, and plus, then you add the wall. So that, that thing is significantly low, so there's no, no sound issues coming from that. And the last comment as far as parking on Pasadena and the emergency vehicles, if we do nothing, that it still is. So anyone who lives past, past, past 402, whether this project gets developed or not, it's there, it, it's the same issue. However, do know, we did work with OCFA, and we had significant multiple plan checks with OCFA, and that whole emergency vehicle access and addressing, that was addressed, and that was addressed with staff. And then the last couple of minutes, I'd like Audrey to address the historical.
And just real quickly, in the staff report that's online, you can just click on the link. The full geotech report is in that staff report with all the details. It's not a page and a half, it's 30 pages or something like that. So that's available to the public right now.
Thank you, Commissioners. Audrey Von Erns, I'm a senior architectural historian with GPA Consulting. Just a few points, as I'll have to talk quickly. We were first brought in this project by the design team. When we first looked at the proposed project plans, we could not conclude that the project fully complied with the standards. We worked very closely with Tony and identified the specific elements of the project that needed to be revised in order to rehabilitate the building and the property in compliance with the standards. They've been very, very careful in their design to make sure that all of the most intact historic features, character-defining features, will be retained, preserved, reconstructed as necessary. They're also voluntarily incorporating restoration. Just to reiterate, we are talking about a rehabilitation project. Rehabilitation is, does not compel replacement of missing features. In this case, lost plant material, planned landscaping, any previously deteriorated features that are no longer on-site. So the design for the replacement of missing historic features, basically, that is not, is not relevant in this case. However, the project team has voluntarily decided to restore specific elements that are missing, being the pergola and then being almost, almost all of the features on the Pasadena Court elevation, which will enhance that elevation for the community members as well. A report that was mentioned earlier is from 2002, that was prepared by, sorry, this seems to be, keep dropping, it's dropping on me, was completed in 2002. 2002 was for another project for this property, which means that over 20 years later, there's, we are still talking about a project for this property. Well, it is a different project, it is a project nonetheless, and so the, the comments about, you know, there not being a longer review for this site is somewhat incorrect. This is the first project that is proposing a rehabilitation in compliance with the standards. And the 2002 report did not involve rehabilitation or restoration. It specifically was for the removal of all of the garden elements, including the stairs and runnel, the fountain, and all other elements. And that is why the brief statements in that report concluded an impact. This project has been specifically designed to preserve those most intact features, and that is how we are able to offset the loss of previously removed fabric. So I'm happy to answer any other specific questions. Sorry if I'm a little flustered, it was a very short couple of seconds to talk, but thank you very much.
What's the pleasure of the Commission at this point?
I'd really like to find out if she's got anything that's important that she didn't have time to say, and welcome her to say them because I need that information to make my decisions.
Did you hear that? So now we're in the Q and A, the, we're not running timers, we're, you're specifically answering. Commissioner Crandall, can you just maybe redirect so that she's specifically answering your question?
I just want to make sure any pertinent points that you may not have been able to get to that will help us in evaluating this and making our decision.
Sure. So obviously, we did not prepare a formal presentation. This is a very large project. What I do wish that I could present would be the existing conditions photographs of what the rear of the property, the garden terrace, actually does look like today. We saw a lovely photograph when it was landscaped. Even that photograph should nonoriginal landscape design. In this case, we're looking at the elements that are intact and are representative of that design of the garden space. That is the, the connection of how the house connects to the sloped lot, how it connects with the stairs and runnel down to the fountain as a focal point, and the overall spatial relationships of the site. The proposed development is specifically for soiled areas where plants are no longer there. That development is, is the most appropriate way to do rehabilitation. It's to identify the areas that no longer retain integrity as the most appropriate place to implement new design, and in which case, a compatible new design. The other elements, oh, sorry, I need to take a breather, a breath. The other elements that we had to consider in our report are the planning constraints, code compliance. The Secretary of Interior Standards does allow for a greater degree of change when you have to meet certain zone compliance, zoning compliance, building code compliance issues. And then, of course, the thing that we also want to highlight is the fact that even if we retained the soil and the stairs and the runnel as they are today, given the, the amount of implementation that will occur to stabilize the site, will allow for the long-term preservation of not just that, the terrace slope garden, but also of the historic residence itself. I think that's something really important to consider. The other fact is that under standard 10, it addresses whether a project is reversible, and this project is highly reversible. In fact, by, if, if you wanted to in the future, you could remove all of the three buildings that are going to be proposed, you could remove those, you could fill the pool, you could relay the soil on top of the garage, close that wall opening on the garage, and it would look pretty darn close to how it did historically and better than it does today. And that is also an important thing to consider. The rehabilitation, rehabilitation standards allow for change. It's about managing change and identifying the most important aspects of what we have left of the historic property today and enhancing them and making sure that by rehabilitating, adaptively reusing a property, you're able to bring it into the future and allow it to be used by future generations. We have a very lengthy report that we worked tirelessly to document all of the character-defining features.
If I could just jump in?
Yes, please.
And give you a little direction. Secretary of Interior Standard Number Nine was specifically called out by Mr. Culbertson. And he referenced the gardens, and would you just specifically speak to his concern about protecting the historic integrity of those gardens with this project and what your opinion is in that regard?
Yes. So I would say that I, in a roundabout way, did address that. Basically, the, the standards for rehabilitation allow for compatible alterations to facilitate a new use, provided that the alterations are completed in a manner that will preserve the important character-defining features. The proposed alterations to facilitate the new use at 402, 404 Pasadena are largely planned for the currently undeveloped areas of soil, which is a compromise between changes that might alter the significant character-defining features that are more integral to conveying the historic character of the property. If the hardscaping was removed, the existing condition of the terrace soil could be easily restored. The standards for rehabilitation do not compel replacement of missing features. No features of the garden landscaping are being removed that were historically there. In this case, lost plant material or planned landscaping, when the property can continue to convey its significance without it. Design for replacement, this is taken specifically from the Secretary of Interior Standards guidelines. Design for the- Design for the replacement of missing historic features, recommendations. When an entire interior or exterior feature is missing, such as a porch or in this Cape's garden or landscaping, it no longer plays a role in physically defining the historic character of the property. Similarly, if the feature is not critical to the survival of the historic character of the property or the building, allowing the building to remain without it, without that feature is one option. Regarding the standard nine, we are talking about compatible, not removing anything that is character-defining, and essentially making sure that the proposed new uses, or the proposed new design is compatible with the historic building. And so, in terms of talking about standard nine and removing the garden, there is, there's no historic fabric being proposed to be removed. We are retaining the historic runnel, the historic fountain, and the pergola.
Okay. I'm going to pause you there. Commissioner Crandall, did you get what you're looking for? Did you want to redirect?
Yes.
Okay. While we have the historical consultant up, I want to just turn to my colleagues. Does anyone want to ask her a question? Commissioner Prescott Loffler?
Can you tell me what the condition of the residence is now, presently?
The condition or integrity? Okay.
Pick one first.
Sure. So, overall, our report does conclude that it still does convey integrity to convey its historic significance. A lot of the historic fabric has been lost from the front elevation details. It still retains its historic fenestration pattern, and it still retains its overall, we rank historic, character-defining features as overall visual character materials and features. So, as part of this project, the applicant, or the design team, has proposed to restore a lot of the missing features from the north elevation. It's north elevation, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And the one facing Pasadena Court. The rear elevation has been somewhat altered by the second-story addition, enclosure of a portion of the porch. Otherwise, most of the historic fenestration pattern is intact on that elevation. Some of the windows and doors have been replaced with vinyl. As part of this project, they're removing all of the incompatible features and replacing them with historically appropriate materials and windows. So, that is in one way how the project also complies with the standards. And then, existing conditions, did you, who are you specifically asking for the residence? Yes. So, I can't really say for the condition itself, I more can speak to the historic character. But, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't know if this is best, who this is best directed to.
Just while we have the historical consultant.
Well, it might be her, or it might be someone else.
Okay, go, let's, yeah, that's great.
How would you, how would you characterize the condition of the fountain, the staircase, and the lower, I don't know what it's called, I think the pergola area? How would you characterize that, its condition? Are you the right person to answer that question?
I think I can speak to the condition in terms of level of integrity. So, the stairs and runnel and the fountain were identified as primary character-defining features because they are largely intact. The fountain, the only missing element, I believe, is the center fountain aperture, where the water actually flows out. That was relocated at some point, lost to time, unfortunately. But otherwise, the fountain is probably one of the most intact. The stairs and runnel are also primary character-defining features. There are alterations that have occurred, such as the replacement of the tile risers and treads. Those were replaced at some point, I'm assuming in the 80s. But overall, that's why they were identified as primary, because they still are highly visible, retain integrity to convey their historic significance and their original design intent. The lower terrace patio, because a lot of the features have been deteriorated and are missing, such as the wood pergolas that had built-in benches that are no longer there, as well as the more individual ornate features, such as wrought iron, light fixtures, planters, a lot of those have been removed. So you really only have the remnants of the columns left. That's why that, those are considered to not retain integrity because of the loss of the historic fabric. So those were actually considered non-character-defining feature, non-character-defining at this point because of how little fabric is left. However, they've been incorporated into the design to partially reconstruct those and to return the historic fabric of the garden-built features closer to its original appearance.
Okay, so, but, and you gave me more than I thought I wanted.
Sorry?
No, that's fine. I'm sure it was helpful to all of us. Like the fountain, for example, is the tile, it's there, the aperture's missing. Is the fountain cracked? Could it hold water? Are the tiles all cracked, or are they in good condition? What's, as opposed to, yeah, the fountain exists. What's the condition of the fountain?
Okay. Tony will hop in with that.
Thank you.
The fountain is, it will need to be refinished and have repair. But because that was such a critical piece, we're actually literally drilling caissons around it to protect it in place, although quite frankly, there's not much there, but we're doing that as a concession to demonstrate, hey, this, we're serious about this. But practically speaking, if you were to see that fountain, you would feel like, wow, this is a lot of work to preserve, you know, a couple of feet and some tiles which are chipped, but we're willing to do it. All that to say is, it's going to need a major, some major work on it.
Thank you.
Can I address real quick on the integrity of the house? So, we, I was with the structural engineer during the course, as we've been doing this, we actually were going to do an interior remodel of the house that, and I worked through, worked with David, and it didn't require anything specific as far as planning. So we actually submitted drawings and were approved through plan check for permitting, but the owner decided not to do it. What was significant is, we examined the basement, so this goes to the integrity question. And to our, we were pleasantly surprised that two of the three, the back wall and the side wall are great. Now, there was mention that there is one wall that's leaking water, and that's correct because there's no waterproofing. And this is the wall that faces Victoria. So we had actually submitted, and it was approved, that we were coming with, inside that wall, adding a secondary wall, adding waterproofing. So other than that, we climbed through the attic and we looked all through the structural, I had the structural engineer go through. We were pleasantly surprised because there was no cracking. Typically, you see, like, all the plaster work in the house, and we could spot settling anywhere. And we were, we were really surprised that there was no cracking, no, no movement, other than that one retaining wall.
Thank you. And then regarding the stairs down in the runnel, how would you say, characterize the condition of that? Is it similar to the fountain?
Yeah, yeah, kind of beat up, chipped.
Okay.
Old quarry tile. Again.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Where do you guys want to go? Do we want to go through rounds of questions? Who's got, is that, would that be appropriate? Well, I want to keep open in case we have questions for the app.
Yeah.
No, we're going to close the public hearing as far as that goes. Yeah, public comments, we've received them all. So at this point, yeah, we'll only call up people if we have a question, so.
I know, I for one have other questions, and I assume most of my colleagues do as well.
I think we all have questions, so, do you want to lead us off with yours and then we'll just?
Sure.
Whoever wants to go next?
This is either for the city attorney or Jonathan, probably, but sequel was brought up a bunch. I know in the presentation, David talked about, you know, exemptions. Have you reviewed the, specifically the city attorney, the, you know, the exemptions that staff found, are they appropriate?
Yeah, so our office has reviewed them, and we did find them appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Has fire and police seen this at design management, and, and they were okay with the proposed project because that was brought up?
Yes, they were supportive, and as the applicant mentioned, with OCFA, there was multiple rounds of review to get it to a point of support.
Okay, thank you. The parking requirement is 17, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all my questions for now.
Yeah, I may want to jump in again later.
We can iterate.
There were, we try to listen to the public when people speak, and there were a few comments that were made as, as if they were fact, and maybe they were, but I'm not sure. So I'd just like to mention those. There was a comment that this is the first time the public has seen this project. But we reviewed this at least twice, I think three times. And there's a lot of public there at those meetings. So when, when were those, like, let's say the first design review subcommittee meeting that we had, what was the date of that?
That was June of 2023. I don't, I don't know the exact date. And then, two months later, in August, it came back for a second review.
Okay, so, the public's been aware of this proposed project for a year, at least, right? So I think I would dispute that statement. We've been looking at this for quite a while, and we spent quite a bit of time at DRSC, and I think a lot of improvements were made, and we'll continue to discuss that. There were some other comments made about this previous project that we looked at tonight, as if we compare other sites, other proposals, but we look at each of these projects individually on its own merit. So whatever we, whatever comments we made, whatever came up, I think regarding a completely different project are not relevant to the decision that we're making tonight. I mean, we're looking at this project on its own merit. So I would dispute that, there was a couple of comments about that. There was also a comment about coastal and how this project is being pushed through. Can you let us know, David, this still has to go before coastal, yes?
Correct.
Even if we approve it?
Correct.
Okay. So the process is being followed in proper order. So that's, I would, I would dispute that one. My fellow commissioner mentioned, so there's a fire master plan that was submitted and approved by OCFA for this project, as far as access for the fire apparatus and code compliance, correct?
I don't believe an actual fire master plan has been submitted yet. That's something that's submitted through the building permit, plan check process. But we did go through the DMT process that includes OCFA. I can have Tony speak more on that, but they did.
I'd like to hear from him on that. Because he looks like he's itching.
Yeah, yeah. No, part of, we joked, and I had commented, it was, and in fact, I, again, included it in your packet, it's sheet A 8.1 through 8.3. We did a full fire master plan. I mean, he, I had to do laddering pads, egress window calculations, full egress plans. So basically, I did a working drawing for the OCFA. I understand why I wanted to make sure it worked, but yeah, no, we did what would be the fire master plan. And it's in your, it's in your drawings. I'm sorry?
Did they comment on that?
After multiple iterations, yeah. We spent a lot of time with OCFA. And again, it's in your drawings.
Okay. So, yeah, I know it's in the drawings, but.
Yes.
So you have at least an informal approval?
Yes, we wouldn't be here.
From OCFA on access.
Which is why we're here in June, right?
Okay. Another comment, let's see, was made regarding the potential uses for this site. Concerts, you know, large events, are there any limitations placed on this project in terms of how it can be used, especially with regard to large gatherings and potentially noise generating events? Or is that something we should consider? I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, I can respond to that. So, this will be similar to the previous project where the temporary use permit process was brought up. So if they have any event that's not under this scope, that's being approved and reviewed tonight, or considered, they would have to go through that temporary use permit process. And there's a 25 event limit per year.
Okay. So what are they limited, how are they limited in terms of what they can do? I mean, they could put, they could set up a band and, and have an event by right, or is that something that any, explain to me how the limitations are put in place and/or enforced, if they are.
Right. I'd say, you know, anything that's not the normal function of a motel, where, you know, the guests are using the lodging units, the accessory uses, in the event, it starts to add structures or tents, right, amplified sound, which is not a part of the project, live entertainments, probably, you know, food vendors, you know, on top of what they have. So anything that would clearly indicates a special event would trigger that temporary use permit.
Okay. Yeah, I would suggest that we try to add something.
Sounds like we need a condition of approval.
Yeah, a condition. They would limit that. The engineer, I guess, made a comment that it's geology, it's not geotechnical, correct?
I spoke specifically to the geology of the site.
Okay. But there's some geotechnical engineering that has been completed. And that's based on this specific project, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to clarify. Also, there was a point made about, you know, what happens once the hole's dug, for instance, because of the amount of material that's being removed. I assume there's some shoring that's going to occur. What happens if there's a significant delay, which happens often with a lot of projects during that time after the excavation has been completed? I'd be concerned as a, as a neighbor. Has that been?
The shoring remains in place until the construction's completed. Typically, for projects like this, the monitoring's completed daily until the basement's completed, the basement excavation, and then it's switched.
Yeah, can you come up?
Sure. So the excavation of the lagging is completed. If the, if there's a redesign, or if the basement project gets put on hiatus, or whatever the contingency is that you're speaking to, that shoring and that lagging remains in place. It doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't expire. When you put in the lagging, there's usually a slurry backfill behind it, which helps fill the analyst space during that construction. It's not just a void. So it serves as a temporary wall in order to then construct the basement walls, which are then permanent. And, and the monitoring, which I was speaking to from my seat, is completed daily until that excavation is complete and the basement walls are completed and backfilled.
Okay, so the shoring that goes in includes permanent lagging. Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm not sure what the engineer designed this as. Sometimes it's referred to as temporary shoring. Sometimes it's referred to as permanent shoring. I believe this is called temporary shoring because the structural design of the basement includes the loads of the surrounding material, the waterproofing, and all the other design criteria associated. criteria associated that has been spoken to.
Okay.
Sorry, just to jump in. Actually, the walls on the south side of the property and the walls that are facing Pasadena Court, as well as that shore in front of the historic house, those are lagging, they will get slurried backfill, but then they shotcrete them. So those are the permanent walls. So in this case, you typically will do temporary shoring on the property line and then they could come in. But in this case, the shoring wall is the wall.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's a standard, an industry standard, they're going to shotcrete that.
I just think on this particular project, that needs a little more scrutiny and potentially bonding to make sure that the shoring, if there's a delay of any kind, can be converted to a permanent condition, at least in what appears to be a permanent condition until the project can be completed. So just something for our discussion, I don't, you know. Because it's been, it's obviously a big concern with the public, as it should be with the amount of sliding, you know, that's been going on in that area. Economic feasibility, that wasn't mentioned, I don't think, by the applicant tonight, but we did get a spreadsheet and kind of a breakdown. And that does play into the decision that we're making here tonight. This, the reason this project, it appears as being allowed potentially, is because it needs to be economically feasible. So, you know, we've been looking at that property in its current condition for a long time. And, you know, we want, as a commission and as representative of the city of San Clemente, we want a successful project to go in there. And so I think that, you guys didn't mention that, Jim, but we looked closely at that, at least I did, as a commissioner, to take that into, because of the way the general plan was written and what you read at the time. Some of the other things I have to say, I think we can wait until we have our discussion, but I just wanted to kind of get, touch on those in the beginning. Thanks.
All right, let's just continue. Karen, did you have some questions you want to ask? Go ahead.
Some of the notes that I wrote down, for those of you that might not have attended a meeting like this before, this is actually a good lesson in physics because our primary responsibility as a planning commission is to try to balance the property rights of the applicant with the property rights of those property owners around this particular project. And that's what, you know, our main purpose is. For geotech, I went through like the slope stability and those kind of things. This, this first geotechnical study is just preliminary. The final will be handled during the building permit process, is that correct? So it'll be a more extensive, you know, study. Also, if you look at four point one three of the conditions, that because this is a historic residence, there's going to be seismic monitors that are going to be placed on the, I would guess it's the house that's going to stay, that will tell if there's any movement at least on the property. But I don't know if there is any that's outside of that house. Will there be? Do we know? Just for the concerns that neighbors around are saying they want to know if, you know, there's any property movement during construction. So that might be an area of discussion. As for noise, again, there's going to be a noise study that has to be submitted as part of the building permit process. So that's something still to be determined. After construction is completed, you know, you talked briefly about having to have a special permit for a concert, but, you know, there's the noise ordinance. So any noise that's generated from functions after the project's completed will be dictated by the municipal code. So if anybody thinks it's too loud, you can call the city and they can go out and check it out over a period of time. Coastal Commission, we already talked about, they're in purview. So after the city approves it, the Coastal Commission is going to have to approve it. One thing I noticed when I drove, that is a very tricky one-way street coming out onto Victoria, and I almost turned right up into it. There probably could be some better signage, you know, at that because I can see how somebody for the first time, thinking that you can turn and having a sign that you could actually see that says no right turn. My biggest concern here is the parking, especially the five spots up on Pasadena Court. Because of how the traffic, you know, moves, it's, it does add to the load of people coming down the other one-way street. Yeah, Casador. So there is an effect there. And it does affect the little Pasadena Court because you have to pull out, you know, back, you have to back out unless I guess, unless you backed into the parking space. And those would probably be most of my discussions right now. Although I do have a question, in Pasadena Court, it would be either west or south? There's an aerial picture. And I want to know, what's it for? We're talking about, is it two oh four? But what's, what is that development that looks like almost a planned unit development? That looks like it's a flag lot that has five structures on it? Is that it? That's not single-family residential, is it?
Oh, you're talking, you're talking to Driftwood?
I don't know.
Is that, is that on the west side of the project?
Talking about this, it would be like four oh six.
That's a Driftwood.
Now, how was that developed? Was that by a, what do we have in our town here? Is it a?
It was built in nineteen seventy-eight. It was, the construction was started within four oh four.
So from city staff? Is that a planned unit development or what is that? Because that looks like, are there four homes on that one lot?
No, it's a condo association.
It's a condo system?
Yeah, so it's a multifamily.
So it's like an R three, a multi?
There are three units, four oh six has six units, four oh eight has six units, four ten has three units.
Okay, so that's pretty.
Fifteen.
That's pretty dense then. What is, and so that got approved with Pasadena Court? Those number of, okay, what's four oh five? Is that a single-family or is that also a condo or a multi-residential?
Right now it's a duplex.
Duplex? Okay, as we go, I'm just trying to figure out, I know what's on Victoria, all the multifamily. As you go up the other street, like four eighteen, four twelve, are any of those single-family homes?
Yes.
Those are single-family?
Four eighteen and four twelve, single-family homes.
What about that next one with the big rough in the?
Four fifteen is four units.
Four units? Okay, just trying to get a flavor. What's, what I would call R one versus R three? Okay, those are my comments and questions for right now. I would like to see if it's possible to get those five parking spaces accommodated somewhere else.
Okay.
I know we're not in discussion yet.
No, we're still going, I want to iterate through it, make sure people get their questions answered. So that's what we're doing now.
And one thing I want to make everybody aware of, we can review all the soils, all the retaining walls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But whatever we approve is all up to our city engineer. It can change totally and be nothing like we approve here. So we're just making sure that it is done properly and the right people do it and that our city engineer has the opportunity to make sure it is done correctly and/or have an outside consultant make sure it's done correctly if it's too complicated to do in-house. So we shouldn't get bogged down trying to figure out how they're doing it. I do have one major concern, and Steve kind of alluded to it, is how do we avoid having the same situation on this project we have on the Miramar? Where it is sitting half-completed and not, we don't see any action, although they're keeping their permits, I understand, by doing some work. But how do we make sure that that historic house is protected from being abandoned because the project became too expensive and it's left incomplete?
Jonathan, can you take that?
Sure, I can comment on that. So the, the Miramar has, I'm going to start from that perspective and then work towards this project, has two permits related to it, a tenant improvement related to the bowling alley, which would be a food hall, and then for the theater, which would be a event center. Those two permits expire in November. The city is not going to take, you know, action against a property owner while there's an active permit. But the city does have a specific property maintenance section of our code in relation to historic properties. And so if that project, which the city has been told would be completed by later summer, is not completed and then work doesn't continue and we get to the expiration timeframe, the city would then be in a position to say, we're not going to extend, you know, it's an option, but we may not extend those permits and then pursue the remedies under that, that section. There's a common phrase in historic preservation referred to as demolition by neglect. And so that, that section of our code references that and gives the city citation authority essentially as a public nuisance. And so there's abatement opportunities that the city can pursue as a remedy if construction is started on a historic property and doesn't continue. That also could go for a property that has, that is in a state of deterioration and has shown no interest upon notification by the city to remedy that deterioration.
Yeah, I'm really looking for something a little more substantial where.
More performance metrics.
We know that if they stop the project with temporary shoring in and can't continue, we're sitting there with a historic property with a hole next to it. Is there, we'll bring it up again, a completion bond? We certainly do it for public works projects or whatever. And those items, and maybe Zach, I see him here. You can address the geotechnical side of it and how you're going to review this project way beyond what we can. But I want everybody, even the applicant, to come up with some kind of process where we can guarantee it's completed and that we're not left hanging.
Okay.
Good evening, Zach Ponson, Assistant City Engineer. Condition three point nine is required per our code, but we add it in here just to kind of make it clear to applicants. But we do require improvement bonds and construction bonds that are in the value of the actual work, though. So if the shoring is three hundred thousand dollars, we get a performance and labor material bond or cash in that amount. So that, and that doesn't get released until the project is, or that work is completed. So there is some sort of financial surety placed by the developer. Usually it's done in emergency situations, though, per our code. So if somebody digs a hole and it becomes a safety hazard, we have a right to fill that hole back up and eliminate that safety hazard. We're usually not going to finish the project, but we'll at least eliminate that safety hazard out there. Because it's very difficult for us to step in and finish a project under prevailing wages and stuff like that. But we do have a right to call a surety company and say, this contractor, the property owner is not completing their work and we do believe it's a safety hazard. We're, we haven't really had to do that very often, but once it becomes a safety threat, that threat of even calling their surety usually gets the owner moving in the right direction. So there is some sort of surety out there, but it's only in the value of the work. And then to answer your other question for the, you are correct, the slope stability analysis will be reviewed by our outside consultant team and it'll go through a very thorough review. We have tentatively looked at it on a staff level at this point. I don't see anything outstanding that draws my attention that we need to do such a study at this point. It's typically done during full plan check. Once we look at the full design of the project, especially in case it changes. So we don't typically look at that detailed fuller analysis in case it changes here or at city council or something like that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
And then my, my last question is for staff here. If it gets approved, it goes to Coastal, probably be some changes and all, and then it comes back to us, correct? And we can, at that time, review and do additional changes to conditions of approval possibly, but not major changes to what we approved, sending it to Coastal, correct?
After the review by the city through the entitlement process and after the coastal development permit process, assuming that any application receives a CDP, they do return to the city. But there would only be a return to a public hearing if there's a substantial modification that's required by the Coastal Commission in order for that project to move forward. So as an example with, with the proposal here tonight, if, you know, one of the buildings is proposed to be relocated or, or a change in the height, mass, et cetera, that would be noticeable, then that would trigger an amendment to the approval that the planning commission issued and would come back to a public hearing. But if the Coastal Commission approves, you know, the substantial form of a, of any project that's approved through the city process, then it doesn't return for a second hearing after the CDP.
And they also review the SEQA findings?
Coastal has a separate review process for environmental that's substantially similar to the SEQA process. So they review all of the same types of information, but under the state code, it's a different process than, than a SEQA review.
Yeah, well, here's what I'm going to suggest. I'd like to ask a couple and then I'm going to start with Karen and work our way back down. So Karen, you're after me, how's that sound? Okay, Zach, can I have your time, please? I want to talk to you about the grading plan. Have you reviewed it?
We did, I believe they.
It's a preliminary grading plan.
They did include one with their package, yes.
Yeah. What's your, what's your take on it?
I don't think it'll substantially change, as Bart was kind of applying, indicating potentially that it could change through the plan check. The shoring system and the layout is something that is very common, to be able to do shoring right up to a property line. I don't, I don't expect a lot of major changes.
Do you see that shoring? It's, it's essentially going right up to the historic property, am I understanding that? And then going across the property?
And right in front of the fountain, too. So they did place some rate up against.
It's almost the whole length of the property.
Basically encompasses all, all sides of the garage is the way I think of it.
Okay, so it's a box almost. And is it basically a wall anchored by caissons?
Correct. And those caissons will be drilled first and the diameter of those and the depth probably is something that might change during plan check, but not something you'll see in the field. And like the design team mentioned, that'll end up being the form work for the shotcrete walls, typically how they do it. And so that, that lagging stays in there, they put up a waterproofing up against it, a drain system, and then set your rebar or steel on that. And then it turns kind of into the building permit at that point, but it'll get plan checked for lateral loads by the engineering department, vertical loads for those caissons by the building department. And so it actually gets checked twice from a shoring standpoint.
Is that intended? I know that's intended for that site, but with respect to concerns from the neighboring properties, either it's down the beachcomber or above, how does this shoring, does it provide any protection to those properties? Does it prevent slope failure in any way outside their property? And I want to call your attention, if I could, to a page in our report from a, looks like a structural engineer, Paul Royer. Are you familiar with this report regarding retaining wall structures? And in this report, he sends it to the architect, Tony, and he says, "The north wall has significantly failed and there is a probability of wall collapse." So I've got a two-part question. Does this shoring provide protection beyond the property value, the property lines? And what, that's part one. And what, that's part one. So specifically to the beachcomber, specifically to the properties above, that's part one. Part two is, with respect to this structural engineer saying, "This north wall has a possibility of collapsing, it's already failed," how does the shoring address that?
I don't know if maybe they can clarify which the elevation difference between that collapsed wall and the shoring, but my understanding is with the three sides of shoring, the beachcomber is technically lower than this site. The garage is not going down on the proposed development, so I don't know if you're actually even requiring shoring on that side. No. So that's, the garage entrance and the beachcomber side is daylight, once you lower the garage. And so you actually won't need shoring. So it's more the actual, I'll call it south, southeast and the east side, maybe it's called northeast. So which wall are we-
You're correct, yeah.
And so if it's, if the wall we're talking about is the cosmetic wall that we see on the, from the street frontage, I'm-
It just simply says, "The north wall."
So he's referring to the one when you're-
Come on up, Tony, let's get you on the record.
Sorry. And it should be in the report. It's the actual one when you're on Victoria.
That's right, it's Victoria facing.
Right, that's the north wall. So think of it, by the time you build the garage, you've basically cleared all of that earth out. So suddenly the north wall has no issue anymore because that's just an opening for the garage and it's the-
Okay.
So it's really the south wall and it's the Pasadena Court side. And Zach is right, if you imagine the beachcomber right now, there's a wall back there that's filled with dirt that's pushing, right? If you took all the dirt out, it would just be a wall. And that's really all it's going to be, is just a nine or 10-foot concrete wall.
And so, let me just say it in layman's terms. Are you saying that on the, so that's the west wall, the low wall to the beachcomber, you're telling me you're removing load off of that wall?
Yeah, it's air because that's the parking lot.
So whatever pressure's on that wall, you're relieving that?
Correct.
So you're, so in effect, that would be a remediation or a benefit to reducing the load on the wall?
Agreed.
Okay. Have you contemplated these inclinometers and installing them around the property and maybe even seeking permission of some of the neighbors to install them?
I have not.
Would you do, is that something you're open to? Jim's nodding, yes.
Yes, okay.
I'm going to need you on the record, Jim, if you're going to talk. And for those in the audience, what I'm referring to is an instrument that's put into the ground that measures with precision slope movement.
Yes.
So that there's no, well, I think I have a problem. No, we have an, I want to have an instrument that's a metric that says, on this date, we read that instrument and there's been no movement, or there has been.
In years past, there have been inclinometers on that site, you know, but I'm sure that we could fashion a condition that would require that, that we'd-
Zach, are you, if we put a condition in here for an inclinometer program, can you help me write that condition? And is that something you're prepared to monitor and manage?
Yeah, try to make something subject to the, as approved by the city engineer, if you're going to do that. And inclinometers, you're literally looking at kind of mass movement. Ultimately, if something like that's failing, you're going to see an entire area moving is really what you're looking for.
Okay. But doesn't it detect, it detects smaller movements, though, does it not?
You have a condition in here right now about the vibration monitoring and I think survey monitoring of the shoring system. And so that's pretty common right now anyway on some-
I'd like, let's just take the west wall and also the driftwood. I'd like to, they've got issues already. They've got a pool that's not, that's cracked and is under slope, you know, issues. I want to make sure that if we can put an inclinometer on that west wall, if Jerry calls up and says, "I'm concerned," you can pull that, you can pull that out of there and say, "We're monitoring that with some precision."
So if it's off-site, especially on other people's private property, you're going to need agreements between those property owners. Typically, that's not something the city's involved with in terms of-
It could be on their property, though, on the west wall, right on the border.
West wall, right on the border.
Right.
I'm trying to think of on a diagram.
I'm bringing up an issue I want thoughts. I'm not looking for answers right now, but I'm looking for ways that we can come together as neighbors and provide some data and some conditions that give peace of mind, but also some facts. We need facts when we have conversations.
And giving it to the direction of the city engineer might be helpful because we might not be able to get all the way around on all sides, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Without getting onto a neighbor's property, we can potentially put one in the street up on Pasadena Court. I don't think you need one on Victoria, but you could put one out there. So if you want to provide direction on how many, if you're looking at three different sides, putting one in out there, I think the other thing on those is we'd want those potentially removed after some time because who's monitoring them? Who do they belong to?
The deterioration of the construction.
And that might be something that, that they're properly abandoned because what we don't want to do is have something sitting out there and then 20 years, we don't know who they belong to.
No, 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 no. It's just a, yeah, I'm just looking, and I'm looking for your help to create that. I want to, so I thought, so that, okay. Is there anything, Zach, that you feel is missing from this set of conditions? I'm looking at, is it 3.2, which is yours, it's by Public Works, "The city engineer shall determine that the development of the site shall conform to general recommendations of the geotechnical studies." Is that enough?
That's our typical condition. Realistically, that's in our code. And so we were told a couple of years back, don't put conditions in that are code issues. If it's already in the code, we shouldn't be conditioning it. But when a project is a grading plan and we know it's going to be a grading plan, we like to include these mostly as an FYI to the applicant.
Are you going to have your own peer geology study?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we won't prepare our own study, we will review their study. That'll be going out to our outside consultant for our geologist review. And then in this case, we'll also be going out to our third party for the civil and shoring review because, like Bart said, the details and process to do those in-house is just too time-consuming.
Is 3.2, if any of your consultants or peer review or third parties come up with additional recommendations or measures that need to be implemented, can we, can those get, are those incorporated in 3.2?
I think so because it says, "The city engineer shall determine that the development." So there's some subjectivity to, you're proving that the project meets all code to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Okay. How do we feel comfort, can you give me comfort that that city engineer, if they get those recommendations, they're going to do it? That's what I want to make sure.
I mean, ultimately, that's what we do with every plan check. We make sure it meets our codes and the applicable industry standards. You asked about if there was any other conditions in here and I have to apologize. It does look like one maybe got missed that I would kind of like on the record. It's about the garage having a gate.
I was going to get to the garage, yes.
Because engineering does not want to see a gate out there unless it's specifically approved by the city engineer. There's the lack of distance between there and the right-of-way that I don't want to see cars blocking the sidewalk.
Right. I mean, to me, that garage door opening has, should be discussed because, first of all, if it's open to the public and it's the summertime, my, what I'm hearing from the public and I would envision this as well, is people going, "Oh, public parking." And all of a sudden, we've got people parking, you know, pulling in there. That's one. Two is, at night, is that, are there lights on all 24/7 and is that going to be a light spill issue or a glare issue? Three, just general security, you know, just people meandering in there and it becomes a kind of a magnet for activity or people to kind of go and hang out. And it's not, is it monitored? Those kinds of things, how do we, how do we address that?
And that's something that, right now, I don't believe the proposal has a gate, right? There's no gate on it. And so when it was brought up, we just, engineering brought that as a concern during DMT, that if we were to add a gate, we would want to re-review the whole situation. And so if there is a condition added, it's, if it is to go through that process, that it get specifically, even if the city planner is allowed to approve it, that the city engineer gets to chime in on that. So that was a condition that I was hoping to add in here. If it's added for security reasons, or maybe you don't want people pulling in, can it have a little light on there that says, "Lots full," or they have those in garages?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned approving this tonight wide open. There's like no, I don't feel comfortable with this design of the open, of the garage just open like this. And that for me. And so I don't want to design it. I don't, I know, I don't want to design it from here, that's not what we're about.
No, it's not meant to be public parking, it's meant to be specifically for overnight guest parking.
But how do you enforce that, Jim? And especially in a summer day and people are, you know how that's, you know, you know that area, you know people, that's hunting for parking spots is what is done all the time.
Well, there's two ways to go, but you sign it and most people, and then you put the forbidding, you know, you will be towed unless you have a, you know, when you check in, you usually have, you know, when you check into a hotel, they tell you to put this on your dash and if you don't have it on the dash, they tow you.
That's your plan?
It's just like every other hotel, yeah.
Okay. I just have concerns about it.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And what about the light at night?
That's, there's a lighting ordinance about dark skies and I'm not, I don't have song and verse in front of me right now, but there's anti-glare provisions in the code.
And I can just imagine light spill, glare.
Tony might be able to address that.
Especially if you're, live up, you know, east on, you know, Avenue of Victoria and all of a sudden, you know, it's nighttime and this thing looks like a big, you know, lit-up sign and it's just light spilling out of the garage.
Actually had that issue with the lighting for the train station, for the lighting along the path, but there's ways to deal with that. If there's not a condition, I think we're happy to have that condition. I think it's already in the code, though.
Okay.
David, or maybe, yeah.
I guess I'm, David, I'm going to look to you later, but to be comfortable that somehow this is addressed and not, oh, we'll get, you know, we'll figure it out later. I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
I'm almost, well, David, why don't you, it's in the code, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. But I guess I, code is fine, it's just, what is the implementation? I mean, if you're saying, "Don't worry, we're going to adhere to code, but we're not prepared to tell you how we're going to do that," I'm not sure that that's something I'm comfortable with, right?
Yeah, I get it, but it's a technical detail that, again, it goes kind of back to Bart's.
But it's also part of the fundamental, fundamental part of the design. And if the design is such that you can't mitigate that because of the design and you need to change the design, that's what I'm leading up to is why I want to see more on the implementation than, "Don't worry, it's in the zoning code, we won't let, we're going to address it."
I think it's in the building code.
Okay, well, wherever it is. Jonathan, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that we could insert, if we're looking at some condition language that could provide more specificity is photometric plans. Our code doesn't require that all development include a photometric plan. That's a plan that would show light spillage based off of the actual types of fixtures that are being installed. Again, it's not common, it's not something that we would look at typically through a hearing process. It's when there's, final details are known and they know exactly where the electrical plant is going to put those fixtures. But then with that photometric plan, it'll show a sequence of numbers. So if you get to zero, that means that there is zero light hitting that point on the property. So we could condition to require one of those.
Okay, because I want to make sure that the design doesn't make it unmitigatable because just the fact that it's an open and it's facing, you know, the right-of-way.
Commissioner Kostrov, also add that condition 5.7 is in place, it doesn't-
Yeah, my colleagues are pointing me, pointing me in that direction, but I just don't feel that that's adequate.
Right, so I think with Jonathan's recommendation, it may satisfy the, or address a concern. There's also another condition of 5.10, which requires that all exterior details and materials be approved by the planning division prior to installation. So in combination with what Jonathan suggested in this one, again, we may be addressing the concern.
Yeah, I think what I'm trying to drive at is, I get, I seek, I read that, that it is, but I want to make sure there's mindfulness on this as an issue. The other thing is, I mean, I have a couple more, but then I want to turn it over to my colleagues and then I can take another swing at this stuff later. But I am, I think Commissioner Camp brought this up, I want, I think we need to be specific about a condition of approval that restricts, that's very clear about special events, i.e. weddings, live entertainment, amplified sound. It's just not, they don't have that in the CUP. And if they want to do those things, it's another public hearing. I want to make sure that that's explicit. And then lastly, we've heard quite a bit of discussion tonight about traffic flow on Casador and the parking, the five parking spots on top of the property. And concerns about traffic flow, about the operation of those parking spots. And I would like to hear how that is, you know, what, how we can mitigate those concerns. So I don't need an answer there, but I, it's a concern I have.
Quickly, we went through the two DRSC meetings and these issues came up.
Yep.
And what we discussed at that point in time, two really important things. All the marketing for this project will direct people to Victoria entrance. So the overnight guests will go to the Victoria address and entrance. Service deliveries will all go to the Victoria entrance, not Pasadena Court, we don't want to mess with that. The elevator and the storage, the dry storage areas and the laundry areas are all on that Victoria entrance. So all your service will be through the Victoria entrance. There is service parking behind where the two, where the trash is going to be. So we'll be able to pull service, you know, box trucks and that sort of thing.
So they're not sitting, blocking the flow of traffic?
Right.
Okay.
Now, I can't tell you that a Bud Light, you know, truck will pull up occasionally like it does, you know, sometimes in the pier bowl, but for the most part, that, you know, the service, you know, the box trucks, the vans, that sort of thing, they will pull up onto the sidewalk, basically, behind the two doors now that will go to the trash. So all your service delivery will be there, except for the stuff that goes all the way into the garage. Your elevator for service delivery is in the garage. So everything's going to work, you know, through Avenue of Victoria and service delivery, guest, you know, arrivals, the guest arrival office is in the lower level there. So everything should be coming through Victoria. The reason for the five spaces, and we did some internal discussion on Pasadena Court, those are going to be signed for one or two for the guests only for that top villa, so there'd be two guest spots for the top villa and would be signed for the top villa. And the other three would be for staff. And in both those cases, we would see that as one or two trips a day because the staff's going to park and stay. And then the villa people will park and stay. And then the pier bowl itself is a classic multimodal transportation center. We expect that once guests get there, they're going to be using the Coastal Trail, e-bikes, which will rent out of the facility, the trolley, the MetroLink. The younger generation, you had some younger generation people, you know, commenting tonight, they're Uber and Lyft users. So we expect this to be a multi, it is a multimodal center and we expect the guests will come once with their electric car, plug in, and they may not use that car for the rest of their stay. So we expect this to be very low traffic generating, but whatever it is, it's going to come in through Victoria, except for the two spots on the top with the staff parking, which will be there all day.
Can you, I mean, and then I want to turn it over to you guys, I just want to follow up on this, on the staff parking. So, common sense, I mean, I think it was Catherine Hall that said, "Hey, you know, you're going to have people working the restaurant, you're going to have housekeeping, you got the check-in people," you know, she's counting off six, seven, six, seven people.
Right.
Walk us through this. Walk us through the staff parking.
Well, the staff parking, there's, you know, be, say, three spaces.
Right.
It's going to depend on the operators and, you know, this has all got to be fine-tuned once we get approved. But you'll have, you'll have a manager that'll be parked there pretty much all day. Then you will have, you know, different types of staff people come that'll be there for four or five hours at a beat. We know from past conversations that employees that work down in- We know from past conversations that employees that work down in, um, the fishermen, they park in the neighborhoods because it's free parking. And we were trying to avoid that problem of having our employees park in the neighborhood. So we provided the parking onsite that'll be signed for staff parking.
But are three spots really adequate?
Well, you don't have, the restaurant, by the way, is not a full-service restaurant. It's a, it's a very minimal, um, you know, Tony, what'd you call it? You had a-
It's a basically-
Food preparation.
Yeah, food prep, a catering kitchen, yeah.
It's not a full-service, high-volume restaurant. It's, you know, probably drinks and appetizers, that type of thing. If that's not the main, that's not the main business. The main business is, is the lodging. So you'll have, but you will have, um, a van that brings in your, your service staff. And that's, you know, you'll, will have a van come in that, um, you have two or three service people that change the sheets, do the laundry, do that sort of thing. They'll be there for, you know, four hours typically. Because there's a window that you gotta get people in and out. And the manager will be all, all day. And then you will have different service specialties coming in and parking in that staff parking.
Are you, you're talking about providing your own transportation services where in, in effect, you're gonna be carpooling with a van that you guys own and operate?
Well, no, not necessarily. You know, again, we'd like to get an approval before we get down to operational detail.
The problem is, Jim, is that what, what typically happens in these things is that you guys are gonna go looking for an operator.
Right.
That operator's gonna have their own standard operating procedure.
Right.
And they may not agree with what you're saying tonight. That's why we need it in a condition that when you go for that operator, you're gonna say, you're, you gotta live with this. This is, the city is saying you gotta do. So I want to make sure that we get those in here.
Well-
So I'm looking for your help to help me get a condition on that parking.
Can I interrupt for a, for a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I guess I'm one, I guess I'm wondering what you're driving at. Cause if they meet the parking requirement of 17, it sounds like you're asking them to provide a mo- to provide more, but the code doesn't require that they provide more.
I'm politely pushing back on they meet the parking requirement, um, with the staffing that there's gonna be required. That's what I'm trying to do in a polite way, saying, I disagree with that. I think they're gonna have five to 10 employees at any given time. And they're gonna all be looking to park somewhere. And I want to be able to look the neighbors in the eye and say, we have a condition where they're not gonna park in your, in front of your house. We have a condition that says they're not gonna be, you know, doing, you know, that they're not contributing to the already impacted parking.
Well, that's, that's the exact-
That's what I'm trying to get at.
I'm sorry, I can't be more specific, but that is the general intent of providing the five parking spaces on Pasadena Court so that the employees, whatever combination that is, don't park on Pasadena Court, you know, on street. They park off-street on our property.
Yep. And maybe we need a condition that's for the operator that says-
I think that's-
Employees are not permitted to park off-
We're, we're, we don't want the public- We don't want beach parking there. We don't want the fishermen parking there. We're, this should be only for our employees and the guests.
Yeah. Karen, let me pass it off to you.
Right.
Thank you for your, your comments. And again, thank you for everyone who's staying late with us. And I appreciate everybody coming up to the mic. There was a lot of good comments and questions and concerns. One of my colleagues mentioned that it's, uh, you know, we have the job of property rights versus property rights. And I'm gonna just go down through my concerns. Some of them already have been mentioned, but at least you'll understand where I'm coming from so that we can, we can address this. I have concern for both the residents that are above and the business that's below. So I'm looking at this, I'm gonna check it down here. Because of one of our past projects, the Miramar, has, I think, caused us all concern as far as the timeline. I wondered what the construction timeline for this project is and if you would be willing to provide all the scheduling if this is approved. So that we understand, you know, the dailies, so we understand what, what's going on, when it's going on. And I think we should definitely consider a performance bond, and that was addressed in 3.9. The construction vehicles, and again, this goes with the timeline and the impact to the residents and to that neighborhood. It is just something that we should consider because it, those narrow streets. If you're going to be putting in this parking, which I, I'm not happy about the parking, those five units, you're gonna have to have some sort of construction operating on that narrow street. 4.6, noise. I agree that we, we need to drill this down. Amps, events, um, the residents that are above deserve quality of life. And to all of a sudden now be exposed to that, though I have to say, this project is a great improvement as to what has been there sitting for years. So I'm not against the project, but I want to tighten it up so that everybody can live together. And I'm looking for some compromise. So the noise is a concern, and I think that wall, I think it was mentioned previously, needs to stay. I think that provides some privacy to the residents and would be somewhat of a sound barrier. I think that could be a concession, and I think that would make some of the residents happy that are right, right there and facing this new project. The, um, the large project itself relates to 4.13. The slope slippage and the stability and the drainage, especially with the business below. I think we really need to look at that and make sure we're doing our due diligence. Those parking spaces I'm gonna address on Pasadena. It just adds to the congestion. It's a very narrow street. I've been down that street, I'm gonna say 50 times too. And I have, because it's so, so narrow, I, I think it is a, a safety concern. And it should just be left alone. That's the resident street. And those five spaces need to be relocated. Maybe they're dropped down to, to three, or there's waivers for the parking and you, and you shuttle them in from the other parking lot. But there should be a compromise there. I think we talked about the dark skies, which is in one of the permits here. And that needs to be respected. It sounds like you would do that anyway. So those are just my concerns. I have no solutions. Like I said, I'm looking for a compromise. And I think we talked about a lot of these things already. Now I'll pass it along.
Scott?
What, what are we doing here? Are we discussing? Are we asking questions? Are we? Where are we at?
I think we're just making sure people's questions are, questions are answered. And then we move into discussion. So if you have no more questions, let's just move it to, and get all the questions out, then we can go to discussion.
Okay, I have a question for David. So it was stated earlier that there were, if you included the curb space along their frontage, that they had a total of 31 parking spaces. Are they allowed to count the curb space? Or if not, why not?
Yeah, yes and no. The pier bowl specific plan that was amended, that I mentioned earlier, that was amended back in 2019, now allows for a property in the pier bowl to use adjoining on-street parking spaces. That counts towards their parking credit. The, the issue is that Coastal Commission, as a commissioner has raised, has not approved this part of the, uh, LCP, or part of the pier, pier bowl specific plan, I'm sorry. So that's what the applicant is anticipating, that they go to Coastal Commission. If they depend on the on-street parking spaces, that they could get denied for that component of the project.
Okay, but, but as far as our codes and our concerns, we, we look at it as 31.
Correct.
In the pier bowl plan.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Geotech Guy, can you please go to the mic? If you guys are dropping caissons and lagging and shoring down, typically you're gonna go, whatever height they're retaining, you're gonna go at least that same amount below grade, right? Below future grade?
This is a structural engineering question more than anything, but generally, sure. This, this design has some breakers and additional supports. It's not relying specifically on the caissons alone.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of a different design than what you would anticipate with just caissons and lagging.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in doing all of this structural strengthening down into the, into the earth, you're gonna make the site much more stable, right? I mean, there's, there's gonna be retention against any potential future pressures coming down, down the slope, down the site towards, towards the ocean. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in addition, you're tying into deeper strata that is more dense and more stable below a potential landslide zone.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm done.
Okay, so we're still on questions?
Yeah.
All right, so a lot of my commissioners brought up, fellow commissioners brought up some questions I had. But just to be thorough, um, some discussion has come up about this restaurant being only food prep. And it's gonna be delivered, food, I guess, is gonna be delivered to this location. How's that gonna be accomplished? Is it gonna be, uh, ongoing? Is it gonna be with local restaurants? Is it gonna come from off-site? How's that gonna? Maybe just clarify, because I think there were some public comments about concerns about that.
Yeah, I, I guess it's, it's more, it's, um, it's not a full ser- it's not like a Nyx, uh, or, it's not a full-service restaurant. Our south of Nyx, you know, they have a full, you know, full kitchen. And I'm not a restaurateur, but there's, there's even in the health codes, I know there's a distinction between a full, you know, there's all these grades of kitchens and some of it just has food prep, where you're not doing a lot of cooking. You just kind of, you know, whip it together.
Yeah, no, I guess what I'm asking is, how do you get the food? Where's it coming from and how do you get it into the restaurant?
There's a, there's a prep area in the lower, in the Victor- Avenue of Victoria level, the street level there. And then there's a stairway that comes up to the garden terrace.
Okay, so a van is gonna show up with food or with, with, you know, raw ingredients and they're gonna be prepped there?
I don't know exactly. You know, something like that. It's not, there's a, and I wish I was a restaurateur, but, um-
No, you probably wouldn't want to be there.
But the food, but there's, there's gonna be some storage. You need, you need cold storage, you need dry storage. And then there's all these different levels of food prep. And this is not a Nyx or a, uh, you know.
So that's all gonna occur down in that-
But there is a food, there is food storage, cold, there's dry and cold storage downstairs and a food, uh, area that you could make for food prep where they chop and do stuff like that.
Okay, so there will be cooks.
So, yeah, so it's not, but it's not a full-service, you know, cater, you know, specialty restaurant.
That's probably fine. Okay, I think we need to get into discussion.
I just want to make sure, anyone else have any other questions?
I just have one that you touched on. And I just want to clarify. I can't, if I open-
Up to you, I gotta open up to everybody. That's the problem. So I, I apologize for that.
Well, are they everybody? I mean-
The applicant. We were going back and forth with the applicant, yeah. Bart, any more questions? Okay. Shall we move into discussion? Who wants to lead off with discussion?
Chair, could you close the public hearing then?
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Gary, go ahead and start.
Well, I, I wrote down three things. One was this so-called guaranteed completion bond. I don't know that we can do that for the actual completion of the project. That's almost like taking property. So, uh, I don't know if that's possible. That'd be interesting to hear. This, these inclination monitors, I don't know if, have we ever done that before? Would we be setting a precedent? Because I can understand doing it during construction, but after that point, it really is a private property matter. If somebody's property or water slides into somebody-
Mine was only during construction.
Okay, but how, how many of those have we? I mean, there's already things gonna be on the house to make sure the house isn't moving. So this would be putting things out in the soil, like down by the walls. Have we ever done that before, required that of our project? Anybody know? No? So it comes down to my real thing is the five parking spots, and I'm scouring over this underwater, I'm not underwater, underground parking structure. I think there's some area discussion of getting all, all the parking, 17 parking spaces under there. Okay, that would be my discussion to look at that, or if they're willing to look at that.
Okay.
Cause that's my, my biggest thing is that. I think during construction, if you want to put in inclinometers or whatever, that's fine with me if it's not something that's overly burdening this applicant. And in terms of the actual completion bond, I'm satisfied with what Public Works were criers in terms of, you know, those bonds. And then really my biggest sticking thing is the five parking spots up on Pasadena Court.
You're opposed to that, is what you're saying?
Well, I'd like to find some better solution because I think, who's gonna stay in room number 11, which is on the ground level, like the same as the parking structure? That's a massive storage area. Why do you have your check-in in the basement? I mean, there's a lot of things that you could move around to-
That's the affordable unit.
Huh? Yeah, that's somewhere where I would have to stay. But I think, I don't know. I think it's how you design this and why don't they go out to the property line? You know, they're on that southwest sort of border. There must be some reason.
Can I make a comment concerning that? Is it too late about the underground parking?
Sure, if you feel like-
Yeah, well, this goes to preserving the historic fountain. I mean, we're, to honor that request, we're making great pains. To me, that could be rebuilt just as easy as the Garden Pergola. So all the, we would have filled up that whole area had it not been for trying to keep that fountain above. If you look the A 2.0 plan, you can see we're caissons around this fountain. And technically, it makes sense. You're preserving this historic fountain. But practically speaking, that thing's gonna have a ton of work. And by the time they rehabilitate and fix that up. So all I'm suggesting is, that's what's limiting us from getting more parking down there is, rather than rebuilding that, it's preserving it in place.
You're removing stairwa- I mean, those stones and then putting them back. Why can't you take the fountain out and then put it back in once you're-
We, we would love to, but that-
But have to rebuild the whole thing.
That's what I mean.
You can't pick it up and move it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It was, it would be hard to rebuild. But all I'm suggesting is if you see the condition of it, it needs so much work. This is, this is literally a formality that we're saying, okay, we're willing to, we're, we know what you guys want, we're willing to do it. But I'm saying, if the difference is, let us rebuild the fountain and we could get more parking underground, that's, that would be, again, if you look at the plan, you're like, why is it that odd shape? And it's literally because of that fountain. And there's just, if you, if you go out and see it, there's so little value. We could replicate that just as easy as we're doing the Pergola.
What historical, I mean, it's true, it's not like, it's not still secured to the dirt. But what's the difference of historical significance if it's rebuilt exactly how it is? Like some of the missions in California and-
Well, that's, that's why this process is kind of beautiful, right? So I, I think that we're, we'd be happy to do that. And I've talked to the applicant. We'd be happy to leave the wall there, eliminate those five parking spaces. You heard the rationale behind, I hope you appreciated the thinking behind the five spaces. But if we could provide more parking underground and we could leave that wall, we think that would be a, a good solution and compromise. We hear you asking for compromise and movement. And also I have a, the inclinometer when you get to that point.
Okay, cool.
Condition.
So our historic consultant is gonna answer your question, Gary.
Chair, it probably seems we need to reopen the public hearing because it, uh, we are, the commissioners are taking questions.
Yep, so we'll reopen it for the, we'll open the, the public hearing for the applicant to answer questions. Please.
Okay, um, so the, I guess the question was whether you can reconstruct the fountain?
No, it's the historical significance of the fountain and, and preserving it in place. What are we giving up if we don't do that, and we just reconstruct it? That's, I think, your question.
You know, disassemble it, and then when you're all done with your underground, reassemble it how it was before.
If that, it could be done, but I would definitely recommend doing, in the conditions of approval, having construction monitoring and having a conservationist involved with the construction monitoring. The, the one concern would be the removal of the ceramic clay tile that is currently there. I cannot speak specifically to the feasibility of doing that, I'm not a conservationist. But it would potentially comply with the standards, or it would comply with the standards. It's just repair and rehabilitation in place is preferred to the greatest extent feasible. So this is why we've prioritized preserving in place to the greatest extent feasible, and reworked the, the plan to keep that in place.
There are tiles missing, right?
Correct. So some will have to already be...
I think it's more of a technical issue with the Secretary of Interior standards, and whether or not this is historically significant, and are we in violation of those standards if we do not preserve it in place? I think that's more the, the point.
But we know, like, the Capitol, the federal, you know, our nation's Capitol, the state Capitol, there have been things that have been disassembled and then put back.
Absolutely. It would certainly comply with the standards, but it is, it is a careful balance between doing as little as necessary. If it's necessary to meet the planning requirements to make this project feasible, then it would comply with the standards. If it is not necessary to make it, the project feasible...
It's necessary to cause least disruption to the neighborhood.
Applicable, feasible, also means approval.
It is approvable.
If we're stuck, then I think we can consider it as an item that would make the project feasible, as long as it can be done properly.
Correct.
I think it's a good solution.
Well, we've, we've already heard that that was in, I mean, I asked specifically the question, and they said that the fountain was in a very dilapidated state.
So it's gonna be harder to preserve.
Well, I guess, no, the point I'm making is it's already kind of, it's already junky.
Doesn't have its...
And they're gonna have to re, they're gonna have to do a lot to rehabilitate it anyway.
Junky in your definition of terms?
Not usually, it's not one of our favorites.
I think that's, I wanna, we need to go that way.
She answered your question.
Bart, what do you think?
That may be a good solution. At design review, those upper parking spaces were trash enclosure originally.
Originally, yeah.
First saw the project, and the compromise brought, brought them down, that worked. If we find the, I don't think we should try to use the on-street parking, since it hasn't been accepted by coastal yet, because even though we've got it in our code, it's unenforceable at this point in the coastal zone. So I don't see any other, I, I guess this thing's so heavy, it's getting a podium slab, I guess, on top of this thing, so I don't even know how you pour that around the fountain. Other, like you say, the, the column's holding it up, and you, probably more damage will be done to it trying to do it this way than just rebuilding it. Is it honestly being historic? We're trying to give the character here.
Yeah, it's a rehab.
It, it is, and it's a reuse, so if this is the only, and I don't see any other way of getting more parking other than doing that, it would require us to continue the project for a design and give us time to get our conditions of approval written and accepted. And it sounds like the applicant's
Open to the...
Acceptable, open to it, thank you, to doing it that way. It might even relieve some other issues that are going on. I mean, right now, the kitchen is smaller than a food truck. So it's, they're doing it so they can be serving food, I believe, at the bar, which allows you to have kids coming up and using that patio while liquor's being served, and there's enough food to let you do it. So I don't see it being a, but you're not going there for steak and potatoes.
Yep.
So I'm okay with that, but I think with the, you might need a peer review with the other historic consultant, but if they can work that, I'd be acceptable to it.
If we move the parking, could we keep the wall, which is mentioned, it, it, the wall, which is...
Oh, we could, um...
Which is, the resident said it was a buffer, it separated the residential...
It's no really different than the one that they've got drawn, other than it's... Yeah, they're putting another wall. They're putting another wall in, so you're not...
Oh.
I mean, you could still put two parallel parking ones there with the, the wall where it is, where the, it's designed. And all they'd have to do is pick up three stalls in the garage, and they'd comply.
Yeah, but we're talking about, we're talking about replacing some of the off-site parking.
Oh, thank you.
How many stalls?
This, the, parking up above is onsite.
No, 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 but, not just to get 17, to get closer to 31. I mean, how many stalls do we think we could add? I guess that's...
Well, I, I...
Underneath.
Hesitate to say more than the code. I'm not comfortable saying, we're gonna require you to have more than the code and not require the other guy.
You're saying that those five spaces, or maybe three, need to be added below?
Well, if you put five down there, then you'd have 16, right? Well, you have two, you have two over there.
Saying that you could have two parallel, two parallel spaces up top?
Yes.
And then provide three additional ones underneath?
Then you comply.
By rebuilding?
Wait, there's 11 underneath, plus there's these two over here.
Well, they're in the garage.
Well, no, there's, aren't there, there's two that's...
You can't park in front of that garage, because there's access. Am I correct?
Right here.
There were two right here.
Yeah, there's one car in the...
Is that one?
One.
Tucked over here.
It's a garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a...
The other two, the other two are the trash enclosures.
If you could put...
So do the two stalls, if we have the parallel stalls up on Pasadena Court?
You get five in there, then every...
Those are still staff parking only.
If you get another five underneath, then you have everything.
Probably a pretty decent compromise.
One.
Well, I, I, you know, I'd, I'd lobby for the three, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if we can get five underneath, but I think we could get three, and then, but then, if, from a practical standpoint, you have five on Pasadena Court, if you wipe out those five, put, leave that wall in, you pick up two on-street, and by code, right now, we're allowed to count the on-street, but then we pick up three more, so it'd be, you, you end up with 17, counting the two on, on Pasadena Court that we on-street rather than off-street.
But the Coastal Commission hasn't accepted that part of our code yet, and you might get into a problem.
No, that's, I, I, Funding Games at Coastal Commission, they could bring up, and somebody said that the lower unit in the, in the Victoria was the moderate uni, they'll probably...
Require that.
They may, they may very well, but we gotta just deal with the San Clemente codes right now. And, and I will, I will mention in passing on the Coastal Commission, there is new state legislation that says if you're in a multimodal transit area within half a mile, you don't have to provide any parking. So we'll throw that out of the Coastal Commission when we get there.
Just to summarize, Jim, you're saying you're gonna take, you're gonna reconfigure, you're open to reconfiguring the Pasadena Court parking from five, to remove the five, retain the two parallel on-street parking?
And get three down below.
And put the, and move the three below. That's what you're saying?
I don't think you can park a Pasadena Court.
Only if you take that wall down.
Okay, well, we don't want the wall to go down, so it looks like there'll be no parking.
I don't know about that.
I think that's a compromise. If we take the wall, we still have them take the wall down, because they're putting a new wall up right there. And that allows for those two spaces on Pasadena Court.
And you only need 12 foot rather than 18.
Yeah.
For perpendicular, because you're going to parallel.
That's still a compromise.
We could move the wall back to provide more, more room for the on-street parking. Right now, it is narrow through there, but we could just move the wall back six feet, you know, and that, that'd do it probably.
Or they could use it for, you somehow use it for storage.
Can I mention something else?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
The, um, you know, looking at the parking garage, I, you know, I like the idea of, of trying to enlarge that and get some additional spaces down there. But there is a lot more space down there, and something that I brought up with Abad was, you know, the potential for valet parking. Now, I'm not saying that, that they need to valet park this, but if you have a, you, you know, what we're really talking about is staff, and they're, they're not gonna be there overnight, they're gonna be there during the day. Hey, come in, make the beds, do the laundry, whatever, right? If you have a onsite manager there, he could kind of, you know, if someone needs to get their car out, certainly call, hey, you know, Josie, come move your car, you know, tenant. But I don't think those people are gonna be in and out a lot.
You mean, so tandem park?
Yeah, kinda tandem park, you could tandem park, or, you know, stuff like that. I'm just saying that there is capacity in there, and if you're gonna have an onsite man, you know, the extra parking demand that we're talking about is during daytime hours. And, and there's, if there's gonna be a manager there that could kinda help facilitate things. And I'm not saying there's a condition, but I'm saying as a practical matter, there is additional space there that could be utilized.
Let me, let me take the temperature of everybody. Are we leaning towards a continuance with a list of these punch items to have the applicant work with staff and come back at a date at their convenience with resolution to these things? Is that, let me take your temperature. Is that, is that how you're leaning? Continuance with a laundry list of stuff to come back with? Karen, yes?
Yeah, I think it's fair.
Scott?
I'm, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
And also be happy to go tonight, but I'm happy to do that.
I could do it tonight, too. I mean, if we could figure out the parking thing, I think we could move forward.
What, what are you leaning? I'm just trying to figure out how, because I'm reluctant to do designing here tonight from here. I just not think that's a good idea.
But we, we don't have to do designing, we can just kinda condition, and then if they can work it out, but...
Okay.
You know, we don't have to design it. We could have conditions, and then they could work it out with staff. But, and if they can't, then they come back to us, but whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be my preference as well.
What's that?
To, to try to get this thing figured out.
Okay.
Tonight.
Okay. Gary?
I don't have a problem continuing.
Bart, what's your preference?
I can accept both ways.
Okay, so we're flexible. All right.
If I could comment, I'm eyeballing it, I, I could get five more in that basement.
Yeah.
I, I can look at that. I mean, I've got some big monkey to do.
Yeah.
An elevator thing, or you could have...
They don't need to do that.
Yeah, there's a lot of it.
Because of, well...
Well, they could also, if they stagger these, instead of polluting that way, you can even get more along that wall. All right, so...
Tony, Tony always jumps in and commits more than I'm comfortable with, but he says he could do. And I really like the idea of staff tandem parking. I think that could really be, because you're right, that's our intent, to have very, we will have very active daytime management, and you just have people move around and...
Can we agree up here, can we agree, no parking on Pasadena Court?
No parking on Pasadena.
Can we agree on that?
What, what about the, the, moving the wall back and doing two parallel spots out of the right of way on there? Just do, are we...
Okay, what I'm hearing, what I, what I heard from the...
Leave it the same.
Yeah, what I'm hearing from the residents, leave it as it is.
Loan, give them a buffer.
Keep, keep the traffic out of there.
Keep the integrity of that.
Try and provide some separation between the, the neighborhood and the commercial property. Keep all the commercial elements on Victoria. So I'm thinking, I'd like to see if we have a consensus of my colleagues, no parking on Pasadena Court. You're, you're okay?
Yeah, okay.
Then they can pull the wall out.
That's what gets acceptable to it, so, yes.
You're okay with that?
If it gets us to an approval here.
I, I'm okay with that, as long as that doesn't create some kind of future death knell. If they could come back, come back and say, we couldn't get five, and then all of a sudden, we had stated, oh, no Pasadena.
That's why it's better to continue and see what...
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
So I'm really kind of in favor of continuing.
I'm just saying, we could, we could, we could, I could do a condition right now that said, condition it to have them work with staff, try and redesign the parking structure to get 17 spaces in there, tandem spaces allowed with no parking on Pasadena. And if they can't find it, they come back to us.
Okay.
How about 16, because we have one on the historic garage.
Okay, okay, 17 on-site.
Right.
But not on Pasadena frontage.
No parking on Pasadena. That's what I'm trying to, see if we are okay with that, if everyone's okay with that.
Here's why I'm gonna advocate to continue, because I think the public has the right to come back to another meeting and see what they've designed. Because they're gonna live there.
I agree, I agree.
I think that's fair, rather than...
That would be my preference.
Because otherwise, they have to go and see what's happening.
But I'm, I'm trying to fashion a consensus, a team approach, a consensus. That would be my approach, but...
I agree, I mean, that, I mean, once, once they see, see what it is, then, I mean, they're living there.
I, I, I...
We're not talking about anything visible.
Yeah, I gotta friendly disagree with that, because we're talking about an underground parking structure. Can you shove 16 cars in there, yes or no? It's not visible, we're not redesigning the facades and the height of the building and this and that. We're taking, we heard real residents, they said no Pasadena Court. We're taking that off, and we're saying, get 16 underground. They don't, I don't...
Right. I think we needed to look at.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's approvable, right?
Yeah, okay.
But we all, we also need to condition it where we're saying that the Secretary of Interior standards say, we can do this. And I'd, I'd like to get a written confirmation from a consultant that says that. Yeah, we can condition, we can do that condition. Can we, Jonathan? Come on, Jonathan.
You're saying, I'm trying to reword...
I don't mean our consultant, I'm talking about, there's what, it should be in writing that we can take that step, and that the, and what is the justification for disassembling the fountain?
I would be comfortable with that, because we have someone who meets the qualifications in-house, who's responded to this scenario already live. So, given that specific situation, normally, to be clear for everyone in attendance, we, we wouldn't condition evaluation in the future, and it's something that would need to be done as a part of the public hearing. But it's, we had that commentary here live, so it's just a matter of putting it in writing to reflect the direction that the commission is giving, with the commission's feedback saying that the project itself should be one that does not have parking up there. So as Audrey had mentioned before from GPA, when the definition of the project changes, then what's acceptable may change. And so I think that all those considerations being taken into account, that, yes, in, in this case, we could.
Is the attorney comfortable with that? Because it should be in their words, not ours, of how we justified it. I mean, is she comfortable with the narrative she gave us here?
Who?
The historic consultant, GPA.
Am I comfortable with that? Or is she? I, you'd have to ask her.
Or do you have verbiage that you would could give staff to make sure that it's documented?
I would feel more comfortable having the ability to craft a quick memo that can be submitted for you. That way, I can actually cite the specific guidance and standards.
So you're saying right now?
She'll get back to us what she's saying.
I think rather than try, Ryan, rather than trying, or I think what she's saying is, rather than trying to come up with some language off the cuff, she would rather, after the fact, write a memo documenting...
Right.
Yes, as Jonathan had proposed.
So that means continue?
No.
No.
What? I'll argue for continue, because I think to be open to the public, and seeing what the final product is coming back, and then approving it, so there's nothing, nobody thinks anything's hidden. Because to approve something right now, and me to say, as a planning commissioner, I never saw that final plan underneath, then I think I'm kinda derelicting my duty. I'm leaving it to, you know, it came to us, so I think there's a responsibility for it to come back to us, and to see it, and that they're satisfied. Both are satisfied.
Well, there's six of us, we can vote on it.
Why, I think we can, huh?
Yeah.
I, I don't just think that a little bit of hurry-up is worth our responsibility to be open to the public and to make sure they don't feel that anything's being done outside of their purview.
I would rather have us unanimous on, on this. And if there is one dissent, I think we should continue it. I mean, because I could have gone either way, but he does make a good point and I think we should be, this is a large project and it would be, it would be nice if, if, if we did check all the boxes.
This is most likely the most significant project.
It's a complicated project.
That we've approved at least in our tenure. I don't know about Bart's, but in ours.
Yeah, it's a complicated project.
And there's a lot of moving parts and it's very prominent. And I think, measure twice, cut once. I, that's, I'm leaning towards a continuance and giving staff the list of things that we want to see on the back, on the backs, coming back. I understand it's going to be another public hearing and it's all of that, but that's what we're signed up for.
And we're getting closer. I think the, the parking is a really good compromise. I think that helps that neighborhood right there.
Yeah.
That, that was, it, it saves the integrity of that, that neighborhood. And then the rest needs to be worked out. But that, that is, that's a big one. From what my notes say, that was one of their largest complaints.
Okay. What else do we want to see?
Are we comfortable with the normal way we do engineering and not say anything about the caissons or anything? Because it's going to be reviewed by the city engineer. Yeah, I mean, I think the fact that we've put it on record that it is a concern, that we, we want to make sure that they really scrutinize, especially that interim, it's called interim shoring.
The shoring.
Yeah. Because we're not engineers here, we're not claiming to be, no. But we want to make sure that, that they look at that closely. The other thing is the, the bonding, I guess we're comfortable, we have to be comfortable with how, because we've had so many examples, especially the, you know, the balling alley, but a lot of other ones, too.
Yeah.
Where things are just sitting, derelict.
So.
And I know it's not their intent, but maybe that's something we can put on the list, things happen, for them to at least look at.
Cost of material, copper, everything's going up.
So I, so Zach, would I, if we continue this, if there's support for that, I would like to see you more engaged in the presentation coming back on all the conditions of approval for Public Works and to address all the slope issues that we've, that you've heard from us tonight, in consultation with, you know, David, you're an old city engineer, make sure that you guys are united on, yeah, these are the conditions that we're comfortable with, this is the stuff we're going to do. Can you do, can, is that fair to ask of you?
It's fair, I just want clarification. Are you asking for outside consultant full slope stability analysis, shoring analysis right now? Because if so, that's a pretty common.
That's your call. You're the engineer.
I, I think this is, should follow the normal process for the slope stability analysis, especially shoring. Shoring is something, they're using Dave Perkis, we see his work all the time. I have no, no problem seeing him during normal construction plan check. Slope stability analysis, this is not a mapped landslide. They do have a reputable company doing this right now. I could talk to our consultant to see if he has concerns and not do a full review, if that kind of helps the matter and at least just see if they have any concerns of the, of the consultant who will be doing the formal review. But not do a full analysis, because that can go back and forth three or four times and take several months.
I guess I wasn't suggesting that they do their own independent drilling and all the rest, but that they would review with you, what you're getting from the applicants.
They do. So they never do their own drilling. They're only reviewing, but they make, look at their drill hole and say, aha, you went 49 feet, you need to go 51, do it again. And it can go back and forth for, we're in plan check sometimes six to 12 months. And so I'm a little reluctant to go for a full.
Okay.
Review of that soil report due to how long it could take.
Well, we're, we're going to rely on your professional judgment on that. I just would like for you to speak to it next time with, these are the conditions of approval that we want to see in here, that, and here's how we're going to, here's how that supports our process.
Okay.
Okay? And can you include the inclinometers where you think they're appropriate?
Okay.
Well, we'll work together.
Yeah, you work together.
He's got some good ideas on how to do that.
Okay, awesome.
I'll make a motion.
Okay? Ready for a motion?
No, before you do, you keep talking about wanting to get everything out that we want them to address.
Yeah.
And consider before we come back, does, do we want to bullet point those?
Yes, that's not a bad idea.
Before the motion?
Yeah.
Well, I think he was going to do that.
I was going to put him in the motion. Yeah.
Yeah, he was going to do that.
Okay.
I thought you were going to add more discussion.
Yeah.
So before you, Gary, just hold on. Anyone else want to make, have something they want to get out on the table here tonight?
We, we talked about.
Yeah, let me, let, let me know.
Noise?
Noise, yeah.
Okay.
We're going to restrict, we're going to make sure it's clear that on that.
And we addressed the parking.
Yeah.
Photometric study.
Music on the deck possibly, we should consider that.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Photometric study.
I make a motion to continue this item, to allow the applicant to try to attempt to bring the five extra parking spaces into their underground parking. For staff to, Public Works, our engineers, to look at slope movement, whether or not inclina, inclinometers are required. Look at the historical significance of the fountain and its perhaps, what's the word?
Constructive.
Reconstruction.
Can be rebuilt.
Rebuilt, rebuilding.
And we're still in compliance with SOI 9.
Right, still being in compliance with the historical criterias. What was the other thing? And to also look into the issue of noise and other sort of events that would require special, you know, permitting, like concerts and.
Yeah, I'm looking for.
I think that's kind of in the municipal code.
Well, I know, I, I don't want to rely on municipal code. I want, if this goes out to an operator, I want it in the conditions that those are not permitted in this permit specifically.
All right.
So it would be.
Include that as part of my motion.
Special events, live entertainment, amplified sound, not included in this permit, in this CUP.
Okay.
Okay?
And it's to date nonspecific until they get all this.
Right, then we want the bonding? We'd like some analysis on that?
Well, I think we had that covered.
It's routine, I think we, we can't guarantee the final, you know, but we can guarantee during the building process.
Yeah, we have our standard condition already in there that covers the actual cost of those improvements. If you were to ask if we should evaluate to increase that any certain amount, that's something we could look at if that's what you're looking at.
And I'd also like to see a, new conditions. I'd like the applicant to study the operation of the garage and, and come back with his conditions on the garage that includes a photometric study to ensure that we don't have light glare and spillage into the neighborhood from the garage. And then whatever, and also address just the operation of it. Again, a condition that says, you know, we're going to have these signs up, this is how we're going to monitor it, you know, whatever, we can put in the condition so that we can make sure that the garage can operate properly without a gate. Or if they come back with a gate, they've worked it out with you, Zach, on.
That's already a condition.
Yeah.
17 or something like that.
Okay, with the queuing on the street and whatever.
If we did do a gate, it would have to be pushed back quite a bit to not block the sidewalk. That's always been engineering's concern with this design. And can I ask for maybe a friendly amendment? I heard a lot of discussion about the narrowness of the exit road, our connects into Victoria. Do you want us to look at what it would take to narrow that a couple feet? I already know it would mean removing several large trees, but there is the right-of-way, their new curb and gutter is going in. I heard a lot of discussion about that. Is that something you want us to look at?
I'm not tracking what you're saying.
So where you turn right off of, onto Pasadena Court and you're going towards Victoria?
Can we get it on the map? It's getting late, I just need to see it.
So it gets very narrow at that steep point right there where his icon is?
Yes.
If we were to widen that street, which they're going to be doing new curb and gutter anyway, it, it pretty much means eliminating a couple of those trees? Do you want to see an evaluation of what would, what would that take to get a little bit more width in there?
I'd say yes.
There was a lot of discussion about how narrow it was.
Well. Just lowering the curb will take care of it.
Lower the curb and then park there immediately. Lower the curb.
I think since we've eliminated all impact on that street by taking the parking off it. You're not making it worse.
Maybe we leave it alone for now.
I mean, if you want.
Something for engineering to decide.
I mean.
They can bring it back and we can decide.
If you want to show it as an option, you know, but I think.
It was something that OCFA did bring up.
When you put the new curb in, what we're hearing is, because the curb is kind of high, people park far away, so they're kind of in the street when they're parking. And if the curb was at like a normal height, people could park right against the curb and that'll open it up enough. Zach, did you hear what I said?
Um, I believe so. If not, I'll look back at it.
No, what we're saying is, the curb is high now.
Yeah, yeah.
So people park a foot or so into the street to avoid hitting the door ding, right? So if you put the normal-sized curb, people can park against the curb, that's going to give you three or four, that's going to give you two feet right there. That's what they're.
There isn't a lot of water coming down that street.
There shouldn't be a lot, there shouldn't be a lot of water there. I'm not worried about drainage there. It was, it was something that OCFA brought up kind of late in terms of trying to get trucks through there.
Yeah, so bring it back as a safety issue, if you think that that's an op, like a, here's an A and here's a B.
We're only looking at a foot or two, but I like the idea of lowering the curb, maybe that helps it.
I think it does.
But even, it is one of the narrower sections of street in the city.
Okay.
So.
If you want to bring A, B, that's fine.
Yeah.
Based on.
If you do this, then it means removing these couple trees. And so you see several of those.
And what the reasons for doing that, but for sure, regular curb height.
Correct. Actually, they need it all the way over to that wall and the viewpoint.
Hundred percent.
They don't even have curb and gutter over there.
The whole length.
So it needs to be real curb, probably needs to be red-curbed and properly signed for no parking.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else, friends, that we want to add in the motion? We, okay.
Chair, real fast, in order to continue the hearing, we do need to make sure the public hearing was still open, and I lost track.
I reopened it and I had not closed it yet.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I'm going to second the motion. Do we need a date, or Jonathan, how do we work that on the, on coming back?
Option is to establish a date certain, or we need to renotice. This wouldn't be ready for, well, the, the next available meeting would be July 17th. So if we want to get the applicant's pulse on, on how soon they think that they could be ready, but we would need to obviously have materials at least two weeks.
The first meeting in August or the last meeting in July? You want to give yourself a little bit of breathing room, because.
More, more time and just renotice.
Yeah, I, it's.
I'd, I'd recommend you take August.
That, that, that's fine. It, it could be sooner. It's, I mean, it's work to do, but I'm staring at it, it's not, not monumental.
Okay.
So we think July would be fine.
All right, we'll do July and if you're not ready, we'll just continue it again. So that, what's the date on that second meeting in July, Jonathan?
It'll be July 17th.
July 17th, okay. So Gary, okay, amending your motion to include the continuation to July 17th with that list of things we'd like to see included in the staff list of conditions?
Right, which are the five parking spots underneath, the slope movement inclinometers, the fountain as an issue, the light.
Rebuild the fountain, right.
The historical significance of the fountain and its possible rebuild, lights and gate in the parking structure, right?
Yes, with the formatic study as part of that.
And then the curb issues along Pasadena Court, since they're already going to be doing sidewalking and.
Yeah, and then any other additional Public Works conditions on the slope that, because Zach said he was missing one, so I want to make sure that that's part of the motion.
Yes.
Noise?
Yes, and then the noise, the restriction on the events.
Okay. And noise.
Which I've mentioned before, you know, the, this is not, that special events, live entertainment, amplified sound are not part of this permit. Just so that an operator is, it's clear.
So no operator.
All right, it's seconded. Any further discussion? Staff, are you comfortable with our, the direction we're providing?
Yes, and just for the sake of clarity for the commission and the public, what we will do is not reprint, it's a large packet, right, 250 pages, so when it comes back, we'll simplify that. Everyone will still be able to reference this existing packet on, online, but we'll bring a redlined version that identifies those modifications to the conditions of approval as well as the updated plans and a memo from GPA.
Okay.